Start our regular meeting of council from February 14. And I guess a bit delayed, but we can start with opening prayer.
Well, let's pray. Dear God, as council gathers in this place tonight to complete the processes of government to keep this town on a working and growing path, we ask you to be here with them and us tonight. Bestow, God, wisdom, insight, goodwill, and courage upon these leaders of our community. May they see and walk through doors of opportunity opened by your favor towards this community of St. George. As the month passes and upcoming days and weeks are examined, let your Holy Spirit keep and guide them. We place these representatives, this meeting, and the town of St. George in your mighty hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
On your favor?
Aye.
So we have the agenda. We're going to approve all of minutes of previous council meetings. First one is approval of meetings for regular meeting of council, January 10, 22.
I have to say no to that?
Okay, well, I was about to ask for comments or questions. I was about to do that.
Didn't want to miss it.
So comments or questions? Counsel Armstrong.
I'll get the floor. Okay. The reason that I have to say no for that is that because it's not 100% accurate. In the, in the, in the minutes, it says the price difference between the radars, units, is $500.
Which page you added, yeah.
Which page, man? Number two.
Okay.
And the price of the trial unit was $4,550, and the price of the new unit for Halifax was $3,415, which is a difference of $1,135. But that's not actually what we were talking about. What we, what we had voted on was that the CIO was instructed to purchase a unit, and he was authorized to purchase up to $4,500. And Jason Goodett, our CIO, informed us that he could, in fact, purchase the unit for $3,415, and it was expected that this unit would have been purchased within the week of, as the email had stated. The email on December 14th was identified for our information only, and it clearly states that the $3,415 would be honored for the, for the entire week. However, after that, the price would go up $500.
So what do you want to change it to?
Well, I just want to say, what I want to change it to is that the price difference between the radar system is not $500. It was 1,000, it was 1,100, and we were not even talking about two different units anyway. We were talking about one unit to purchase only.
Can I have a question? Under the vote on the motion, in favor and opposed, I went back and I checked the YouTube recording, and I'm not positive, but I thought the mayor voted in favor of opposing, or voting in favor of the motion and not in opposition. So it would actually be five to two instead of four to three. You remember?
I remember that after, after I saw the group of four voting, I said, what the heck? And I said, no, I don't remember. But I, I, in fact, I was, I was, I was, I was one of the people that I found ridiculous that for $500 we went back on something that would have been, would have been so important to actually have. And then I heard some explanations that, you know, we're gonna go and get another one from, from the, from the service commission. No, no, my recollection, Counsel Colton, is that I, I, I saw the four people up there voting in favor, and I said, oh, maybe I threw my, my hands up in, in frustration. But I, because I found, I found it ridiculous that for $500 we went back to this one. So no, so I, no.
End of discussion.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. With regard to the point that Counsel Armstrong said, I believe, I believe, and this is a very minor point, I believe that the reference here is that the particular unit which we had here in St. George changed in price. Whether or not that was grounds to actually amend, amend or modify a motion that the council had passed before, at that time, there were not any, any, any issues raised with regards to Robert's rules, or, and I have not looked into it. So I, I don't see any problem with that, frankly. Do you have any specific wording that you want to change it?
Would you just change?
Just the difference between the two radar units was $1,135.
That's what you would change?
That's what it says, the price difference between radar units.
The way that I understand it, based on the, the motion from, from Counsel Colton, was that the price that we were about to buy went up $500 bucks. This is how I understood it. Is that correct, Jason?
Yeah, the motion was based on, it was a cost increase to the units?
To the units that we had here.
That's correct.
Yeah.
There was no mention in the motion of any costs.
So that, so that, that was the base on which Counsel Colton brought the motion. On that particular unit that was kind of default, unless Jason had decided not to pursue it, the default unit went up $500 bucks. I did not know about that. Somebody learned it and raised a motion. So that's correct, if it refers to the most, if it refers to the same unit that we had here. If it refers to the same unit that we had here in St. George, because at that time we had a unit on trial, on test.
Okay.
Okay, so that unit apparently went $500 bucks, and on the base of that, we said that unit went up $500 bucks. Why the, the CIO did not pursue the other unit which was cheaper? I don't know. I mean, this is different. But that's correct. This is correct. The price difference between radar units is $500 bucks.
So, Your Worship, just on, just on that point that was raised, we will alter the price difference between the radar units is over $500? Would that be fine for the, for the minutes?
Yeah, sure.
Just the purpose of record-keeping?
For, yeah, for, yeah, yeah. Any other comment or question about this point, about, about the agenda of, or the meetings of the, of January 10? Actually, actually, while we are there, and perhaps we should actually capture it, and I'm not sure if it has been captured here, there was discussion there, which I don't see it here, that we will be pursuing the, pursuing the request to the Service Commission to get a, a trailer from them, free of charge, to actually get data that we can send to the RCMP. And that's an important thing, and it's here. Trailer unit is available. But have you requested, Jason?
Yep. So just for the point of record-keeping, there were four points that were made from discussion, so we'll add a fifth. The town will pursue use of, future use of the, of the mobile trailer.
Correct. And just, just supplementing a question to that one, because I, 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 just to follow up on what Jason said, I, I raised the issue at the Regional Service Commission, and I told them the importance to actually collect data, both for actually know where we are, for the purpose of communicating with the RCMP on where the policing should be, should be focused, and thirdly, for actually be able to defend our reputation with anyone who claims that we are, I guess, lax. So it's, I believe it's, 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 it's something that is still on the radar, if I can use the term. It's a pun. Right?
I got it.
It's a pun, yes. So, yeah, so I think we are good. Oh, this, 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 this. Any other comment or question? Okay. I need a motion to, to, to approve these, these minutes?
I make the motion, approve the minutes.
Second.
On your favor?
Aye.
The next one is January 21. Yes. We have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a, we have, yeah, we have a, a, a closed-door meeting, January 21, that we have the minutes in front of us. And I, just before we started, I overheard that something is not correct with the minutes.
Kathy wasn't there.
Kathy wasn't there. That sounds like a, yeah. Questions, comments?
You go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna ask, I just wanted to know whether or not Kathy was actually attending the meeting.
She was not.
So is she aware that she was listed?
That was she's.
That is she aware that she's, she's being listed as attending?
That's a, that's an error.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have something else, though.
Go ahead.
The following items that were discussed was listed just as staffing, and I feel that, I believe that that's just a little bit too vague, because we did actually spend quite a bit of time talking about assisting a neighbor, a neighboring community, and the challenges that they were facing. And, but we also made a motion at the end of the, at the end of the meeting whereby our CIO would go and assess the situation and bring back, bring back the information. That motion is not listed on here?
That's correct. It would be, it would be captured in.
Is it, should it be captured in here?
Um, not necessarily, because it's regards to the staffing.
Okay.
That's pretty, I guess, sensitive when it comes to, to have information that's, that's released, so, but we certainly captured in there the motion was made. So I can, I can add the, the point on the motion.
Okay. Any other question? And I need a motion to approve?
I'll still move. I'll second it.
On your favor?
Aye.
Closed-door meeting, February 3rd. Macadamdeve Place, the following, with the question, code of conduct, meeting a jour, yeah, any questions on that, on that closed-door meeting, February 3rd? Comments, questions, minutes? No questions or comments? I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the town of St. George closed-door meeting for council for code of conduct.
I'll second it.
On your favor?
Aye.
Item five on the agenda, conflict of interest declarations, any, any conflict to be declared? There are no conflicts? General reports, general government report, local government reform update. Actually, to make a difference, and local government reform update. Jason?
Thank you, Worship. So general government report for the month of January, lower bridge sewage line installation work, the engineering stamp drawings were submitted to Estherbrook, were submitted from Estherbrook Engineering to DTI, just awaiting for DTI to come back on the approval of the drawings. And once those drawings are approved, then they will go to the installer, and then we can start looking at, starting the work for those lines. For staffing, Joseph Crowe has been hired on a six-month work term for Public Works. Macadamdeve Place, Horizon continues use of the building for vaccination clinics with several other community events, some over the next few months, such as a workshop for the Canadian mental health. A section of the ceiling was damaged by an roof leak and is being looked at this week. Canal Beach, permits have been received for septic field. Tenders were, tenders were issued in late 2022, or sorry, 2021, for two of the three project areas. Two of those areas were, was for land work, land prep, and the other one was for the building construction. The retaining wall is their remaining holdout or pending right now. The walking trail is part of the Coastal Link Trail. Public tendering for the trail construction is expected to be posted at the end of February. Groundbreaking ceremony is tentatively planned for late April, early May. Capital projects, town's compiling a list of projects, pos, for possible capital projects in 2022, and we hope to meet with council in the coming weeks to review those plans. For review, water main project, application is, has been submitted. We've yet to hear anything on this. I'll just continue to update council with that. Hillcrest Dip, the town is monitoring a dip in the road on Hillcrest Avenue, the subdivision, and has erected bump signs, temporarily filled the dip with the sand. The area will be excavated and can be repaired as weather improves. Preliminary work for the municipal plan is underway, with the first reading planned in June, open house and formal presentations April and May. For development and housing, we did receive one proposal for the multi-unit residential RFP. We did have some interest, but only one submission. We are working with that, with that contractor to update his proposal and offer some additional information that was not present at the time of the initial proposal. Industrial park expansion, the town received formal advisement that funding for the preliminary work relating to the new production well and Third Lagoon, both of those are tied to an industrial park expansion, that preliminary funding was, was received and proved. We are waiting for final notice that will include percentages of funding. RCMP speed enforcement, the town has been in contact with RCMP on matters relating to speed enforcement, and their traffic enforcement team has been in town several weeks over the last couple, the last month. Fire department dispatching, installation training for the new TMR radios and dispatching has been delayed due to, due to some aspects of the pandemic. St. George Fire Department, air packs, the town did receive funding from the Farm Credit of Canada for a new air pack for the fire department. Canada Post, the third party representing Canada Post is still looking for proposals for a new location of the post office. MP John Williamson has received correspondence from the town and is seeking further information from Canada Post. For dangerous unsightly properties, there are two active files we're being worked on with respects to properties in the town. One file has an outstanding order, while the other is on a timeline for action. Day of Adventure Center, much like last year, will be holding in open doors, Day of the Day of Adventure Center for those with interest in using the buildings to attend and present their proposals. It appears this day is intended right now for March the 21st. And just FYI, on the Day of Adventure Center, the Girl Guides continue to use one of the buildings there. Main Street decorations, winter banners and lights were removed. Anyway, a lot of staff has been working on financials, year ends, in preparation for the auditors who should be arriving in the first of March. Blacks Harbor, while, well, in earlier requests for administrative staffing assistance was received for Blacks Harbor for the interim, they are working through the situation, and assistance will be limited by the town at this point. So residents complaints, certainly this time of the year, we have received a number of complaints regarding plowing and snow removal. So we have also received some regarding non-town plows, plowing into the streets. We've done some social media blitz on that. We've received a complaint on some damage for a fence along the road, and walking trails not being cleared, and snowbanks too high, and of course sidewalks. So we're certainly, we'll take, we'll certainly take the complaints. We use those certainly as feedback, and residents can contact the town hall or member of council if they wish. And I believe that is it with the general government update.
Questions, comments?
When you say several times, the RCMP or speed enforcement, how many is several?
I don't have it exact. It's only as they, twice that they've let me know that they've been in the town.
And in light of, in the residents' complaints, I guess, I have a question around, is there, is there a way that we can solve some of the snow clearing? Like, do we, do we have the opportunity to hire, like subcontract some of it in light of our present situation? No?
We certainly can hire, I guess, what would be the situation?
Not having enough to do, yeah.
Enough, you mean?
Yeah.
So with the hire of Mr. Crowe, that would put us at where our winner numbers would be. We would usually typically have one other person for casual, so that is really the only, the only spot that we probably would have a need. But, I mean, as of right now, we're still, we're still looking at some casual opportunities, so.
So that, that's been resolved, then?
For the most part, yes, yeah. You know, and one thing with, with outside contractors, there is always the concern they don't know where lamp posts are sometimes, they don't know where, you know, maybe fire hydrants are, you know, they're, they're not really so familiar with, with where some of the infrastructure is, so.
Okay.
Did we have to hire the outside guys because we had so much snow? I know we asked, what's that?
We have in the past, like 2015, for example, we, we brought in outside help with the amount of snow. We will use contractors for snow removal, taking snow off of some more of the, the, you know, dense, densely populated areas of downtown. They'll truck it away. We've got a, that's sort of a snow, snow removal area that we take snow to. So that's, that's usually the extent of what we use a contractor for.
Because that was a freaky storm. We had an awful lot of snow that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta get rid of it. We can't clean it up if we don't get rid of it.
Yeah, gotta put it somewhere.
Yeah.
We already have that, didn't we hire a contractor to take some of the snow away down on Forty Street?
We did, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I just want to follow up on two points. The first one is with respect to enforcement and the issue of radar. I have raised the issue with the Service Commission about what happens to the data collected by these units. So I confirm that the Service Commission does not keep a database of all the data, and all these data are turned over to RCMP. So I have asked if the RCMP has this data, like, when, when the unit displays, say, on Mount Pleasant Road for three months, when they take the chip from there, is it go to a big database? And somehow they keep some statistics on why this? And I, I, I hope to get an answer from that, because that, that could be useful information for everybody, for everybody.
Worship, just, just add to that as well. I've also requested information from the Service Commission just on their trailers and to other communities. There's been an issue of, of, I guess, for, lack of other words, well, there's, they're not fully disclosing the community names. They will use like Community A, or Community B, or Site C, so they will use those instead. So I'm awaiting that, that, that report, so we should probably get something here fairly soon.
So now, now, now streets have a privacy? Is that the privacy rights of the street? Or what, what, the reason for that?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, you know, what the right term would be for that, where the information is collected. Maybe, it could be as, as much as another committee not wanting to divulge information that will put them at, maybe at.
Looking bad?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
With, with St. George, so.
I, I expect that they're gonna give us an answer, like the RCMP itself is gonna give us an answer, because we put it on the, on the, on the board discussion of the Service Commission, and there was some, some follow-up, there will be some follow-up. The second thing is, for anyone who, who watched the board meeting, the other, I guess, this month's board meeting, the issue of assistance to Blacks Harbor was raised, and I'm thankful, actually, that somebody was listening. I, one of the persons I want to thank was, is the, the executive director of, of the Service Commission, who actually felt very similar, like me, that the government should be supporting a community who may be into some difficulty, particularly as we go through this crisis. And I am happy that something has happened there. I just wonder, I just wonder, Jason, if we're gonna discuss a local government reform update now or later?
We, we certainly can. I do see it's, it is on for set, again, another, another error within, within my typing. My apologies, but it is under 7A and is well under 7C, so it is coming up here shortly.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay, okay. So it's an error. EMO status?
Thank you, Worship. The town EMO remains at level one because of the pandemic. The province will return to level one next Friday at 11:59, so that's when some of the, the limitations will be, will be released. We're not quite out of, out of the woods on the winter pandemic directives from the province that we, once level one goes away, I guess, when the, we're back to level zero or some normalcy there. As of today, there were 3,365 active cases in New Brunswick. That decreased from just even on, on Friday, when that was around 35, 3,600 around. There are 112 hospitalizations as of today, and again, that is a decrease from Friday's data, from 135. And unfortunately, though, the data that'd go up was the number of deaths in the province shows at 292, and that's the update for the EMO status on COVID.
A propos, we were talking about earlier, briefly, what does, what's the difference between now and Friday, or Saturday?
The biggest is, the biggest is your bubbles.
And now what?
Twenty.
Then we go to level one, where it's 50% occupancy for a building like, like here.
That's as of Saturday, or Friday night?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there still will be, you know, for, for many different public places, there still will be limitations on occupancy until we clear out of the levels altogether.
Another question, EMO? See, update on local government reform.
Thank you, Worship. With council, local government reform. So as of right now, there are two committees. There's one, it's a, a sort of a leaders committee, consistent of both the elected officials within the municipality and LSD chairs and at least another LSD rep. So typically, there's been two, two representatives from each, each of the entities, so the municipalities and the LSDs. Neil Jacobson is the facilitator, his contact information has been shared with council. Several evening conference calls have taken place in the matter of determining council composition. The council members elected by award system versus an at-large, or maybe a hybrid model of both a ward system and an at-large. So that's sort of, there's been some discussion on the numbers of, of those council members, and as of right now, indications show that it shouldn't exceed anywheres from 10 to 11 at the maximum, using larger cities as a comparison. Also discussion on finalizing municipal boundaries, that's even ongoing, that discussion's ongoing this week. There isn't much that we can really alter when it comes to the boundaries, but some small alterations of, of maybe taking in another house, or maybe excluding a, a house. One, one matter is certainly around the Diggity Wash Bridge. The early, early boundary line showed that it went across the Diggity Wash River, and currently, right now, what's being proposed is bringing back the boundary line of the Diggity Wash River. So those things are still being worked through, and they're being sent up to Neil, Mr. Jacobson, and, and then he's coming back from the province on whether or not they've accepted or declined those changes. So those are really the first, the biggest issues we're having right now is, is just getting through the, the composition and the boundaries, and that should be done by the end of this week.
Do you have any questions for Jason? I just want, I just want to, to add to it that there is also a, a. I just want, I just want to, to add to it that there is also a municipal representative's component in that interface with the facilitator. I am part of it, and Counsel Ruben is also part of it. I attended the discussions about the boundaries and about the, the representation model that we follow. One thing that struck me, actually, two things that struck me, were, A, a decision by, by the government to essentially keep the debt of its incorporated municipalities with the municipality. And that, that sounds reasonable, except, except the cases of operational equipment on which they have, will have debt. Will have backhoes, will have trucks, and some of them, they're, they're, they're getting paid by the month. And starting, starting the date of the amalgamation, these trucks will belong for use to a larger area, but the smaller area of St. George will continue paying the debt for these trucks, or backhoes, or, or, or. The other thing that struck me is how small percentage St. George represents in the new entity. This is not a case of a city taking on more suburbs. It's a case of a town get diluted in a very larger council, in which maybe it will have two, two representatives. And that is something that, that, that the St. George citizens should start getting used to it. I don't, I don't, I don't know how, I mean, I, I, we cannot speak for the future, but I cannot visualize yet how a person from Beaver Harbor, maybe, like who had all our council was alerted to some incident with a snowplow the, the weekend. And who had four councilors running to CAO, tried to find a response. If this thing's happening in a new, in a new reality, how that will, 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 will play out when only two people may actually be involved, and they have to come to pass on this priority among other things to a CAO. So that, that is one, one issue that, that we should, we should consider, and we should give some input. Because one thing that can still play, given the limited number of seats, would be nine, would be 11, but it's a very narrow, narrow range. And we are what, 6% of the population? We are about 6% of the population in the new entity. So one thing that I would have liked the council to actually give input, and inquire about their, their networks, is what kind of representation will fit best for our community in the new world? Do we want to have a, an at-large model, where essentially, you know, if bright individuals from St. George come up, they can actually, you know, have, we can have like four or five? Or a ward system where every, every, every little community, whether it's Beaver Harbor or St. Patrick's, who have like 100 houses? 100 houses or less?
For where we're getting less.
Yeah, has the same, the same weight. So this is something that, that, that we have a duty, I believe, to actually put an input as to what we believe is the best for our community. What kind of, of structure, given the options, because we cannot design what we want. It says, you know, guys, it is between nine and 11. It can be either wards, or at-laws, or a combination. So we should, we should actually try to, to, to put our input in. I don't know if, if Counsel Ruben has any comments?
The only thing I see, we're gonna have a counselor on the council, that's it. Decisions are gonna be made by everybody else. There's gonna be one person in St. George. Definitely one person.
Definitely one person, yeah.
Definitely one.
Definitely one person, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two, I don't think so.
And, you know, I, I, I mean, you know, this is, this is, this is what, this is what is, 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 we have to actually grasp. Normally, bigger cities tend to, to, to grow, and, and, and draw in, and, and communities around them, which are under the same city. This is a case of actually one little town getting thrown into a much larger rural community. And what surprised me is essentially the rigor by which small rural communities, like your former community of Buck Bay, who wants to have three councilors there, or, you know, small communities like Beaver Harbor, who is like what, 100 houses?
Probably a little bit more than that.
Yeah, they also want to have the same, almost the same weight as, as, as St. George. And, and that is difficult to actually process. But we are still, we are still discussing, we are still discussing with the facilitator, within his parameters to go back and forth. And we'll keep you updating. And I, I mean, for everyone who's watching, if you want to contact any of the councilors to bring input to the council from St. George, we have, we are all ears. And we are moving on to Fire Board. Chief?
Can I take this off? Perfect. Morgan?
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay. All right, for the month of January, we had 14 incidents. Fairly, fairly busy month, not outside of the realm of possible, though that happens from time to time. Five of them were inside, and nine of them were outside. Wide variety of things occurred. We had some car accidents, alarms, those are normal, chimney fires. While we don't have as many chimney fires now as we used to years ago, they still happen from time to time. Had a couple of station coverages for St. Andrews, a vehicle fire, an ambulance assist. I assisted Charlotte County Ground Search and Rescue, and we had two structure fires that were minor in, in nature. So we were busy. Training, we're busy at that as well. This is the time of year to try and cram in as much training as, as we can get. We started a firefighter one. I'm very active in that as an instructor and coordinator. 28 students this year, that's probably a record for, for students. That's partially a reflection of doing this online. It's kind of opened it up to, to more people that, that couldn't necessarily participate. You know, it's, it's hard for students from Deer Island or Campobello to participate in the course in St. George. So in the past, they would have, you know, they wouldn't have done it, whereas now they are. We also have a, a student from Dalhousie, in, in the northern part of the province, that, that's joined in with us. So that's, that's occupying a fair bit of time. That's two nights a week for the next several months to get that crammed in. Equipment, slowly but surely, the stuff that we ordered starting back in August, September is trickling in. Piece here, piece there. Some of it is gonna be out of date before I get it, I think, but anyways, we're getting there. I will say, computer. We talked about this computer, it seems like forever, going back to the former council. We got a computer. It, it broke down like day one. The audio card was bad, so they come down, they fix the audio, worked for about three days. The video went bad. They come back down, fix the video. We came in my office last Friday, showed me the cameras working, that's great. I put it up in my backpack. I'm home this weekend to work on it. It's, it's, it's dead. It's, you can't, it won't power up, it won't do anything. I'm gonna drive over it with a truck here, real quick. Just so you know, it's not a minor inconvenience. I do my instructing for these 28 students. They, I've lost contact with them. You know, I can, I had to go in today and create a new email group on my St. Stephen computer, so I could send them out messages. I have no St. George email. I've gotta get income tax forms out for, for the firefighters. I do payroll. I've got first reports that have to go into the Fire Marshal's office, council reports. I need it. So I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do, but it's, it's been a real pain in the arse, for lack of a better description. But we're working on that. As I mentioned in my report, COVID kind of restricts what's going on around the hall. But that's gonna hopefully start changing here soon. We've got some training to do with respect to the regional fire dispatch. That timeline was a little bit wacky. The, we've got to get equipment installed in the trucks. We've got to get training done, and then we've got to do the, the switch over. And we're trying to coordinate that with the, with the town timeline in St. Stephen as well, because St. Stephen can't switch over until, until St. George is gone. So in the next few weeks, I'm hoping to see some technicians come in, get our equipment in place, so that we can do our training, and, and move on. If the equipment doesn't come, then I'm, I'll hold them off. I'm refusing to do training until the equipment's in place. The other part of that was, is I didn't want to train while we had active cases within the fire department. And it only makes sense to keep the firefighters prepared as much as possible. So hopefully, in the next 10 days or so, COVID will continue to settle down, and we'll be able to do that. Last thing I mentioned in my notes here, just some general statements on local governance reform. I, like everybody, are just kind of watching to see what's happening. I know that fire service is part of it, but it's not part of it, depending on who you talk to. They, they, they're saying that it, it can wait until the new officials are elected and, and whatnot. And I, I struggle to, I'm sure there are answers, but if, if there are answers to some of these questions, why won't they give us the answers? Like, for instance, on January 1, we have an LSD fire truck in Bonnie River. If I need fuel in it, are the credit cards that Darren McCabe's office currently has to put fuel in it gonna function? I don't know. Can't really get an answer on that, right? What, what kind of a structure are we gonna, you know, have? There are, there are different scenarios, and there, there are ways to, to move forward, but I, I don't see how it can wait. At least, some kind of discussion between now and then has to happen. But I'm told, probably won't happen, so. I've seen the, the timeline as far as the transition, and there's no mention in there whatsoever of fire service, so it seems like they don't plan to talk about it, but, I don't know. Maybe you guys have more insight than I do. On that note, I have been discussing it with the local chiefs in, in this end of the county. We have some ideas. We, we're gonna meet again here soon and, and talk them, talk them over. So if somebody does decide to come and talk to us, we know what we think we should happen, and we'll see where it goes. But again, we'll just have to wait and see, I guess, what, what happens. Because there are three fire departments within the new entity, and, well, possibly even four, depending on how far you go. And there's another island just across that's saying, you know, how come we're left out? You know, our, our mutual partner, mutual aid partners are all part of this new entity, and, you know. They're looking out, looking in, thinking, you know, maybe we should be part of that. And that's something we can talk about with fire service down the road, outside, you know, what, what the rural entity wants and needs. But what's going on within the new entity, I think we need to answer a few questions before January 1. Otherwise, if I have a fire, or we have a large fire, somebody's gonna be getting calls. What are we doing? That's all I've got to say.
Questions?
Questions?
I have a question about that computer. Was it purchased, and was it brand new?
Yeah, it was brand new.
Okay, and what's the warranty? Take the fire truck and back over.
I, I don't know, but I'll say this, that they probably got about $2,000 in fixing it right now.
And it's still not, and it's still not working?
It's, 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 it won't even power up now. Like, I can't get it to turn on, to do, it's, it's dead.
So why wouldn't they give you a brand new one?
Well, we asked for that. I, or Capson, Cap, Marquis suggested that somewhere along the line, but they're, they're not. I don't know. At some point, they'll have to do that, I guess. But the, you know, and that, and that's great. But I've transferred the information onto a hard drive from the old one, lost that when it failed. Thankfully, I had most of my stuff on a personal hard drive. Transferred it over, lost it when they come in and put a new hard drive in. Transferred it back onto the new one, lost it again, transferred it back on. I've got hours and days, and, you know, time that I should have been spending on all these things that I need to do that are falling behind. I mean, like my first reports, I'm, I'm four months behind.
Is this a company out of St. John that's supposed to be helping you? Or you don't know where they're?
You're asking the wrong person on that.
No.
It's, it's, it's the, the company that we bought it from is responsible for getting it.
What is the brand name?
I've mentioned brand names before, and had lawyers come after me, so I'm not gonna do that.
Oh, okay.
I have two questions. I have two questions, but they're not related with the brand name of the laptop. When, when we started talking with the province about amalgamation, the first thing that I, I turn on to our CAO is that he should have a discussion with you. Because fire is one of the big, fire protection is one of the big components. Where we are supposed to get efficiencies and, okay, that, that, you know, that is the thing. And, and I understand it's a hot potato, because somewhere close to St. Stephen, they tried to do something, and I hear a small revolution is brewing there. But I, I think that is very helpful. It would be very helpful if you have that chat with Jason. If you have that chat with Jason and convey St. George's take on fire protection in the new world. I know that you have a good, good working relationship with the other fire departments, so that's very positive. So giving that thing to Jason, I believe that it would be helpful. So I, I will encourage both of you to get together and, and have that chat, okay? The second thing that I want, I want to, to have, it's, 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 it has nothing to do with amalgamation. You mentioned about the fire that happened, and I don't want to get into specifics. I, there, there were two fires, one fire, that I, I noticed it, because it woke me up. And I, I want to ask you, when events like that happen, is there any investigation through which we can learn? Because, you know, I, 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 I have, I have similar equipment in my property, in my business. And if there is something, and possibly we are sharing suppliers with, okay? So is there any, any component from the province, public safety, that looks after what happened and gives you lessons that you can pass to me, the owner, business owner in St. George? That maybe I should be aware of that and look at it, you know? I know I'm going around smelling things, but.
Yeah, well, every fire, we, we, at the local level, one of our missions is to determine cause. If, if we're unable to do that, we can reach out to the Fire Marshal's office, and there are certain criteria. Injuries, death, dollar, dollar value, things like that. Suspicion of a crime, things like that. None of those, the dollar figure was there, of course, but there was no, there was no suspicion of, of a crime. It was an accidental fire, really that had nothing to do with it being an industrial application or anything like that. It was, everybody in town saw, saw some flashes and whatnot. It was, that wasn't industrial in nature, but it was in an industrial park, in an area that was away from the other buildings and other structures. And that's, that's where that stuff, that's why we have industrial parks. So when things like that happen, it's not in the middle of the town, or it's not in the middle of a residential area. It, I would say, ye- yes, it was, it was looked at. Were there some lessons to be learned? I'm not, I'm not gonna get into that too much because of privacy. It's their business, what went on. But, you know, I talked with, with the officials, and, and they may make some changes. But really, there was nothing, there was no neglect or anything like that. It was just an accident.
No, the reason for this I'm asking is because I personally have two similar equipment.
Yeah.
Okay, and we may be even sharing the same supplier.
Yeah.
Okay, or the same inspector who comes to look at my stuff.
Yeah.
And I live next to them, so I just want to make sure that if there is, you know, that if there is any lesson that I should know, and going around and checking, I should, I will learn.
Well, I'll tell you, general, general, that would, would apply to everything, whether it's your home, your grads, your, your, your business.
Yeah.
Um, things that are plugged in tend to, uh, cause fires. Uh, if they're not plugged in, they won't cause fires.
Okay.
So if you're, if you've got something that's plugged in and, and you, doesn't need to be plugged in, unplug it.
Okay.
That's the best bit of advice I can give you.
Okay.
And that's, without saying too much, you know, that, that is a lesson for everybody, you know? Uh, and, and I, I, I preach that a lot. I preach that to the kids in the school. Uh, something that is not connected to electricity won't, won't catch fire, um, you know?
Okay.
Whereas if it's plugged in and things, things have recalls all the time. It could be a coffee maker, it could be a, an alarm clock, it could be a, you know, microwave oven. Um, it could be anything like that. And when they're plugged in, sometimes they catch fire. And, uh, and sometimes those fires lead to, well, what we saw the other night and, and other times, not so much. But, uh, that's, that's a lesson for everybody. If you're not using it and you can unplug it, unplug it.
Any other question?
I have one. Um, of the motor vehicle accidents, how many were speed related?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you that.
How many were in town?
Um...
There's four, so...
Yeah, um, you're gonna make me think about where they were now. I would, I would say one. I could be, I could be wrong on that, but I'm gonna say one.
Any other question?
Good luck with the computer.
I'll manage.
Thank you, shit. Thank you very much. I guess we are back to Alex. Building the planning report.
Um, I'm gonna go home and unplug everything. Uh, thank you, Sean. Good advice. So I'm gonna give the development officer report tonight. Um, I will, a little bit later, uh, be talking about the municipal plan background study, but we have finished a draft of that. Um, and that's the basis for what the new municipal plan will be based on. Um, we also provided support in, uh, registering a bylaw. Uh, with the development incentives bylaw, we gave some perspectives. Um, and, uh, we, I believe tonight we'll be finishing up the process for Seven Wallace Street. We just had the public hearing, um, and I believe third reading is on the agenda. As usual, winter is pretty quiet in terms of developments, um, not a whole lot happening. Um, we are still doing inspection of 2021 files and, uh, we got lots of questions about new developments. Um, people wanting to do things and, um, directing them to the right place or, you know, maybe starting an application. Uh, we have been working on enforcement. Two letters were sent to property owners who built or structurally altered things without permits. Um, and, uh, finally, I don't know how many people were super excited on Friday that StatsCan had released its new census data. Um, I was very excited. I'm sure everybody was. Um, and the city of St. George has increased the population by 4.1%. Um, which is, uh, really good to see, cause the last census between 2011 and 2016, there was a slight decline. Although generally, St. George has been growing steadily. Um, just for, for the, uh, for recent memory. And that's actually, um, all of Charlotte County did see growth. Um, but, uh, most of Charlotte County until this census had not seen growth. So it's really good news for the overall county as well as St. George. Um, it does give us information for planning. Uh, unfortunately, the way the census works, you don't get everything at once. We have to wait another, uh, six months or so before we actually know how that population is made up, how old people were, um, whether they're newcomers, long-term residents, all of that interesting demographic information we'll get to later. Um, but that's pretty much it for the, the development report and, uh, we back up, uh, not too long to talk about the municipal plan process. And happy to answer any questions, although I'm really just reading Alex's report, so I might not be able to answer them, but I can do my best.
Since I'm mathematically challenged, what's 4.1% increase? What does that make it?
Uh, it's 62 people.
Okay.
The other piece of information we have is there are 17 new private dwellings. And I think it went, uh, it was around 15, just a little over 1,500 people and now it's at, uh, 1,570.
1507.
Yeah.
I have a question about...
1507? From 1,500?
It's 1507. We're up to 15...
Seventy.
Seventy-one.
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about, you mentioned, the, the, you had to send two letters for, for unapproved
Yeah.
construction. Uh, were they inside the town or...
I don't know. I honestly have no idea.
Oh, it's a general...
It's, I mean, somebody knows, but I don't know.
In Charlotte County?
No, no, this is in town.
In town, in town, okay.
Two letters are here.
Oh, in town, okay.
Two enforcement.
I, I just, I just want to actually get a feel about, um, um, how your calibration, is that what you complain?
Uh, no, they work, work being, uh, being done without a proper building permit.
So, like, like somebody complained about it or, or, or they were saying?
No, uh, through either bylaw enforcement or through building inspection.
Okay, through building inspection. And, uh, uh, what kind of structures were?
Uh, both residential.
Well, they were residential, so it's just like there was, somebody was building a house?
Uh, not to that, not to that, uh...
Usually it's an addition, someone's, you know?
Renovations to, to an existing house.
And renovations to an existing house?
Yeah.
So at, at what point the, the, the experts and the planners and the, 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 the enforcement, at what point they get involved? Like, if somebody decides to actually change the size of his window, um, you have like, um, an inspector coming in?
Is it an egress window? Is it, is it a window in a bedroom? So if it's a window in a bedroom, it's, if it's, uh, we call it an egress window, that's, so that's an emergency exit. If it's in a bedroom, but if it's a window not in a bedroom, then it's not structurally altering it. It's very, it's very specific. It has to do with the National Building Code. Um, and honestly, I don't know much about it because I'm not a building inspector. But the way it usually works is either somebody complains, Jason notices something, um, or our building inspectors, either they're in town for another reason or they're just, they do go out and look for things. Um, and they'll see somebody building something. They have a pretty good knowledge of, you know, yes, this is, um, you know, if they see somebody building a, uh, like a doghouse, that's, that's not a building code structure. They don't care about it. Um, but let's say they see somebody has started framing around a door, so they're building, you know, maybe a new deck or something. If it's attached to the house, that's a building code structure. So they'll, um, you know, they'll, they'll do, you know, they'll look, check with the other building inspectors in the office, does anybody know about this? If we have no records of it, then we'll get in touch with the person and say, you know, hey, just, you know, this needs a building permit. We can, and we do try to bring people into compliance. Um, so we'll try and, you know, okay, you built this thing, you still need to apply for the permit. We're going to check and make sure that you built it to code. If you did, great, we can issue the permit. If not, then you're gonna have to take part of it apart, make sure it is to code. So that's generally how the process works.
Okay, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's, 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 it's an interesting, uh, it's an interesting question because I, I, I've, I've heard comments from the community of, um, of essentially, um, uh, things that normally used to actually be, 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 I mean, you mentioned fire exits, that, 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 a resident came to me and, and, and actually, um, told me that she felt a bit overwhelmed slash frustrated of, 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 um, of, um, too much focusing happening on a, on a small thing. And I, I just want to know, like, essentially, you say, frame, it's a frame, framing is a, the, the, the operative word, if, 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 framing.
Um, I mean, the community play, so now it's, it's also...
I mean, you know, if, if you go to, if you go to, to things like, uh, say San Andreas, if you cannot change the, the siding because it has some other issues like, uh...
Heritage.
Heritage, yes.
Yeah, they have a specific bylaw in certain areas that governs the types of siding and things like that.
But as we move say to, 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 to the new reality of a larger rural community, um, a guy in Penfield who actually decides to actually put a, a garage on his yard, uh, is that something that, that has to be now more?
It depends. I mean, there is a rural plan for Penfield. Uh, it doesn't get quite as detailed or in-depth as the municipal plan and then the zoning bylaw. We've actually just, um, I believe the minister any day is gonna sign, uh, revised rural plan for Penfield. Um, so there is, there is planning there, there is zoning. It's a lot simpler than what you find in municipalities. Um, but, you know, I know there is a lot of this talk out there with local governance reform. Um, at least I've heard it in St. Stephen, you know, with somebody who's living out, St. David's River, they're gonna have to live by St. Stephen's bylaws. No, so it's, it's, um, what we expect is they'll keep their zoning. Maybe the, the new entity or whatever will be administrating it and enforcing it, but it's gonna be the same rural plan. And I think it's until, uh, is it 2025?
Twenty-three seven.
Uh, plans for the, the entirety have to come into effect. So at least until then, um, basically they'll keep their own plans. In some cases, like in St. Patrick, there is no rural plan, so they're only dealing with building code. Um, and the building code governs certain things and there's really no gray areas in building code. Zoning, municipal plans, rural plans, they can be a lot grayer. Um, they can be very specific locally, like with St. Andrews.
Political.
They can be political. Building code should, you know, all of New Brunswick is using the same building code. It's all under the same building code administration app. It should, it should be the same everywhere. Although, uh, historically, there's, you know, we certainly find places where people can go, oh, you never need to get a building permit for this. And it's, you know, maybe you did, but it just was never enforced.
Thank you, thank you. Any other question? Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome. I'll be back.
Um, point for which, can I step out for two minutes?
Um, well, actually, uh, what time is it? We can take a five-minute break if everybody wants.
I just have to step out.
Okay. You have good endurance. Not everybody has it. Water and Share.
Thank you. Worship, uh, water and wastewater report for the month of January. Average, uh, daily water consumption in February was, uh, 26, uh, 264,135, uh, imperial gallons. Uh, for a total of, uh, 8,188... Sorry, my, I haven't need glasses. Um, so, yeah, over, just over, uh, 8 million imperial gallons, uh, for the year. Uh, there was no coliform or E. coli reported, uh, well levels are good. Well number four had a failure of both the soft start, uh, which controls the start, starting and stopping of the pump. A new one was ordered. Uh, a new pump for well two has arrived and, uh, been installed in the spring. And just remind council that was part of our, our gas tax, uh, top-up for 2021 for upgrade, upgrade, updates to well number two. Staffing, uh, was an issue for January as COVID ran through the staff. Um, so we did have one sole, uh, employee, as you see there, and, uh, he should be congratulated for a job well done. And he's certainly been commended for that, uh, hold the fort down, so to speak. Uh, one of the pumps in sewage lift station, uh, number nine on Macinicic Drive, uh, will need replacing. Uh, this pump has been, been to the manufacturer three times for rebuilds in recent years and now needs a total refit, which would cost 9,500. A new one, uh, which, uh, the dealer recommends, uh, since the old one is no longer avail, available, is 14,000. The station is the one with the styrofoam contamination, which affects the floats, controls and the fact that it has to be pumped out. But it does not affect the pumps themselves, so there's no correlation between, uh, this pump going. This pump is, uh, uh, was purchased in 1992, um, so it has been rebuilt three times. Um, so I guess what we're looking for, for is direction from council on which of the route to take. Either rebuilding for the fourth time or now going and spending, uh, you know, about four, four and a half, uh, you know, 4,500 on a new pump. Um, so this was, it's not, it's unbud- it would be an unbudgeted item, um, both, uh, repair repairs of that excessiveness and, uh, the cost of this, of this pump, so. Um, as well, results were added to the report as well for C B O Ds and V O Ds, uh, for the month of January.
Questions?
Would it make sense to buy a new one, wouldn't it, to keep repairing that one? I would say.
Yeah, my recommendation would be to buy a new pump. Why fix something that's 20 years old or more?
Thirty. Thirty, yeah.
It's not a huge difference in price.
I do, I do have a little, uh, it's really more of a clarity. Um, cause I know that last month we talked about the same, the same pump. We talked about the styrofoam. Um, and, uh, even though your report states that there was some attempts made to curb the styrofoam situation, that there wasn't a lot of luck. But verbally, you had shared that we're, we have a plan and the process is in place. So I guess my question around all this is not really around the pump so much as this, you're saying here that the styrofoam does not affect the pump itself. However, it does affect the controls. So two, a few questions. One is, has the screen been installed and are we monitoring the, the level of styrofoam today?
So as of today, the styrofoam issue is gone.
Is gone, gone?
Right.
Okay, so that means that there, where we put in the $14,000, does that include the new floats and the, and the controls? It's just the pump itself? So how much does it normally cost for us to come, to repair the controls?
Controls would be something else for control units. They'd probably be around 4,000 if we had to replace those. So the only thing that styrofoam would do, the pump's designed to run continuously or for long periods of time, but one thing it would do is drive up power. Uh, so that's usually one of their first indications that, you know, whether it's, uh, mostly sewage lift stations, I can go down through the monthly power bill and almost know that there's some sort of an incident going on at that, that pumping station, um, just by the power in- increase. So it would just cause it to run continuously, uh, longer. Um, but, you know, it's no, no issues with the controls. Controls aren't burnt out. It would just be the pump itself.
Okay, so when we're getting back to the screens, do the screens need to be cleaned?
Uh, the screens at the station itself.
The screens that are collecting the styrofoam?
That's inside of, that'd be off, that's not us.
That's nothing to do with us, okay.
Yeah.
Last time, uh, when, when the issue was brought, Jason said that this thing happens primarily when they have to maintain their filters. So essentially they take the filter out and they bypass.
Yeah.
And then all this, this, this...
Pebbles, styrofoam pebbles, yeah.
Go into the pumps and they make damage. And, uh, I, I, like, I, I said that one thing that we should actually tell, because as long as, as they keep the filters there, there shouldn't be anything coming. The problem will happen when they have to actually go and replace a filter and they still have to run the operation. And the, the only way to deal with that, the only thing that they can do to that is they actually have to commit to actually have a bypass that's gonna be filtered so they can have like essentially, and that, that is worthwhile to actually go and have a chat with them.
And, and, you know, I guess just, just to clarify too, you know, this is not just confined to the industrial park. We see this with restaurants in St. George, anywhere that has any deep fryers, they're supposed to be filtering out. Uh, we typically will start to, to know there's some problems, uh, you know? Sometimes we don't. Sometimes we find out that there's, uh, you know, that grease is, cause compiled into sewage mains. So, you know, filtering, you know, the private dwelling or the, you know, the private, uh, operations certainly lets our expectation as they filter properly. Um, you know, we do inspections, ensure that it's done. We will go, actually go in. Part of our own bylaw allows us to do that. Um, you know, and certainly it's, it's about just having communications. I mean, the incident that happened in industrial park, it was, um, you know, once you talk with the general manager, problem solved itself. We do the same thing with restaurants as well. We'll have issues where, you know, we annually will go and look at sewage mains for blockages. Something's changed and you suddenly go up the line, you find a restaurant that is, you know, no longer filtering and just pouring grease down into the sewage station, uh, sewage main. Um, you have a conversation and certainly that things get, those get changed. So, uh, we sporadically will try to do sort of inspections to see. Um, and basically all we're trying to do is say filter it, you know, try to get into much more than that besides saying filter it, how you do it. We don't, you know, we're not overly concerned of how you're doing it as long as it's not coming into our system.
I just want to, to say that, that, um, the mayor has, has sent his thanks to, to the individual who worked.
Yes, I heard that.
Counselor, so, so I, I did, I did her, her thanks on, on that card. And so we, we are glad that we have people who can actually keep the, the ball running, you know, while, while these things are happening.
Don't make the motion to purchase the pump.
Hundred percent.
We have a motion to purchase the pump. Um, first and a second, so, uh, uh, any, any, uh, uh, it's on the floor. Uh, are there any questions before I put vote? Okay, so all in favor? Transportation report.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, transportation report for the month of January. Salt and sand use for January was, um, a little over a hundred fifty-one, uh, hundred tons. Sand was forty-five tons, snow clearing was sporadic with the largest storm on, uh, December the twenty-ninth. The largest crease in the road surface occurred, uh, in Hillcrest Drive, believed to be frost related as we've had a lot of rain followed by low temperature. It follows a trench from water and sewer lateral on the south side of the road. We placed sand in it, uh, for leveling and, uh, we'll top it up as need be. And that was just in relation to the Hillcrest subdivision dip that I spoke to, but early. We'll continue to monitor that and, uh, um, and watch for any type of further growth. Guard rail on the end of Little Lane has been removed and awaits, uh, contractor, contractor to replace that. It was damaged back in September, took out a sig, significant amount of time, uh, to get the insurance money to fix that. So there was a vehicle, uh, that had damaged the guard rail and, uh, we put a claim through, uh, the operator's insurance and finally received funding. Uh, the Cove Base, uh, was removed from the main hall here, um, and, uh, it was replaced. Some Christmas decoration had, uh, were taken down, including, uh, those at the gazebo, at Gypsy RS, the gazebo. The remainder will be taken down as weather permits, which has been done as of, to date. The three ton had a differential lock repaired in January. The one ton still needs an exhaust manifold, uh, to replace the now nine-year-old one ton. Uh, the wait time is, um, one year for any type of new vehicles at least, so. Uh, we hired a casual to fill in the fourth spot, as I mentioned earlier, and, uh, they've started February the second. And that is the transportation report.
Are we on budget for snow clearing and salting and sanding? Not over budget?
No, nope, so far, so good, yeah. We'll see.
Questions? And one thing I want to add is, um, in the next three weeks, based on previous experience, we will get, um, a decision from the Department of Transportation on Mount Pleasant.
That's right.
Based on, on, on previous years' experience. So that will, that will, that will tell us, um, whether or not we'll be able to do some significant work on Mount Pleasant and the sidewalks. We have one person there who may have an interest in that. And, uh, we can move to bills paid and payable. To January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six seventy-two dollars. Do you want to add anything to what's in here, Jason? Um, questions?
Uh, I've got one. On, uh, Fluent Information Management Systems Annual Subscription, thirteen eighty. What's that?
A page?
Fire, yes, sorry, it's fire, fire department, sorry.
Oh, okay, no, I was just, just curious what it was.
Yep.
Maybe your computer would come in on that.
This is the act of law for, uh, this.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other question?
EpiPins. EpiPins, St. George Pharmacy. Is it something that you keep? I know, I know what an EpiPen is, I'm just saying, is it something you have to keep in your first aid kits?
Yes, for the Macadamic here, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are they renewable, like?
Uh, they expire.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew there was expiry day, I just wondered where they were, that's all. Just curious.
Nose in, hands out.
In case I need one, I wanna know where it is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other question? Well, we don't have any more questions. Uh, I, I want a motion for, um, to, um, to approve this bills paid and payable.
I'll make a motion that we move to pay the payables for January twenty twenty-two.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, new business. Resolution of council on third and final reading in its entirety by bylaw eighty-seven, Development Incentives Bylaw. Jason.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, so this is the, uh, development incentive. The, um, this is the third and final reading and this, uh, this final reading is the one that, uh, was submitted to the town solicitor, um, and updated, uh, without any other additional verbiages, which is very limited. But that has been it.
Any questions or comments before we?
I, I do. I noticed on page seven, on the first two readings, on the section six, the grant formula, there's been some changes on that. Um, the town of St. George will apply a formula that gives grant to developers over ten years for developments eligible under the policy and where an agreement is entered into by both parties, if pending speed. The development incentive grant formula is as follows. So what the new changes are, is the town of St. George will apply a formula that gives grants to developers, which grants will be paid out to the developer over ten years for a period commencing one year after the completion of the develop, development. Such grants will be paid only to the developments eligibility, eligible under this policy and where an agreement is entered into by both parties. Section C, the development incentive grant formula is as follows. So there's, it's quite a big change there, is, is.
Doesn't change the overall, what's, what's being said about any of the charts or the formula itself. It's talking about, you know, when the commencement of, of this actually takes place. More or less to protect us from ensuring that, you know, that it's known that it's gonna be one year after.
But it doesn't talk about the one year in the first two readings.
No, that's right.
That's right, yeah.
That's, that's, that's where, that's where the additional is as well, to say that, you know, one year after the completion. I, I guess if anything, it would protect more of the developer because if they immediately, upon the completion of this, I mean, if they wish to submit to the town, um, you know, to, to try to get some sort of rebate based on the calculation, at that point, their assessment would not be known. So they do have the ability within this now to say up to one year that where the property will be reassessed with a new development. Previously, it was sort of open-ended. To say, you know, you could, you could be here, you know, you could be two or three years, but after one year after, this is when it should be taking place. Budgetary-wise, we certainly want to know, we wouldn't want a developer to come in in February after the budget's already released and say, um, you know, I'd like to have this this year. We'd wanna know at least a year in advance for budgeting purposes for, 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 uh, development payout.
Okay, so that's the reason for that, that, for that change?
The one year, yeah.
Okay, is this, is this the St. Stephen model?
Uh, St. Stephen passed similar, yes, yep.
Is it?
Yep.
Okay.
I think it was originally done with, uh, the Service, Service Commission, um, did their research on this as well.
Uh, the second change is on change on page twelve, um, and it talks, and what it does is it's actually, it changes, it changes the affordable rental dwelling. It'd be number, let me see. It would be section C, number, uh, I guess the audit procedures, number two. It changes it from fifteen years to ten.
Yep, because the life of, the life of the incentive.
Yes.
Is only good for ten years.
Is only good for ten years and not for, but even though we passed the first two for fifteen, we can pass the third reading.
Long as it performs the final, right?
Okay.
So the issue along that is, let's say, um, you know, fifteen years out, they, or twelve, fourteen years out, they decide that they're not, they're gonna take the affordable housing out of there. There's no, there's nothing in here that we could come back and say, well, you know, hey, or we need to pull back some development agreements. We can only, we can only have any type of, um, I guess, I guess restrictions or, or, or we can only really touch the, the development for those ten years that were, that were actually engaged in this, in this incentive. You know, beyond that, I mean, we couldn't withdraw or pull back any incentive at that point.
This is a very complicated, it's very complicated. It's, it's extremely complicated. We're actually going through a process of doing one of these now in St. Stephen. Nobody can figure it out. Like seriously, nobody. And just wondered if there's any, you know, if we, if there's a way to kind of simplify it a little or I guess.
We, we have looked at simplifying it, yeah.
We started that, okay.
And the best thing to actually understand is that Jason made a, a little calculation based on a one million dollar.
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've done some Excel calc, like using a calculator. Um, that's sort of what we'll be using for going forward.
I have one question, um, and it's more of a qualitative rather than quantitative question. Can this bylaw incentive be used by developers who are coming up with this idea of the glorified dog houses? That you seen Fredericton?
For like, uh, um.
I mean, now, now they have come to this three hundred, hundred, hundred and seventy square foot, uh, micro homes.
Like tiny houses and stuff?
I got them in dog houses, but.
Yeah, no, because I mean, really this is only looking at, I mean, I'm not sure how you'd get a multi-unit in a, a, a four units or more and, uh, cause that's sort of, that's one of the stipulations.
It's gotta have four units in it.
Right.
Well, all, all I'm saying is, a guy who's gonna buy four dog houses and put them together, would you qualify for that?
Uh, no, I wouldn't qualify.
And, and what provision, he will not qualify?
Well, the, the value on it alone would have to be a certain, I mean, under page four, there's certain values of, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, so.
Okay, 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 that, that, that's a good point, that's a good point. Because there, there is a lot of, if you follow the social media, uh, there is a lot of talk about this new model of, of affordable housing and I hope we don't have to come to this in St. George. And, uh, yeah.
Will this be honored by the new entity?
Uh, yes, yeah, anything in agree with you?
When this, three years from now, when these things are done, this, somebody else is gonna make the decision.
We got an answer about this today.
Yeah, there's an email. We, we'd still, we'd still honor those, uh, yep, there's still.
So for ten years, we are going to be, St. St. George will be paying a grant or a.
Incentive.
Incentive for the building of a property.
Right.
So that, that money has to be within our budget.
That's right, it would have to be each year, we'd have to know what's coming, right? Um, that's the reason why we've sort of put that one year point in there because, you know, we, we would wanna sort of have a developer come to us and, you know, we're not budgeting.
So essentially, so essentially on year one, at a million dollar facility, you could essentially get fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty. Essentially, so two million to twenty-eight thousand.
Right.
Yeah, um, no, that, that question that, that, uh, Councilor Rubin was my concern because I, I'd not want us to get the debt to actually pay the incentive and somehow we don't, you know.
The incentive comes from the taxes.
From the tax itself.
That are coming into this portion of the country, so it's.
Six percent.
Now they're coming out of somebody else.
Yeah, the incentive is not designed to exceed any revenue we would get in from tax revenue, uh, from that property, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, we're kind of, you know, we may not be making any revenue off a new development, um, you know, for the first few years, but I guess what it brings to the community is, you know, much-needed housing, you know, spark of construction, jobs. So, you know, I guess that's, 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 that's sort of the premise around this is that we are telling developers that we do need that these, you know, whether it's rental housing or commercial development, that it is needed in St. George. And we have had a number of developers that, um, that are, um, that are sort of have their files on hold, whether it's with the Service Commission, um, that are sort of waiting for this, you know, because this is sort of sending that message out that yes, St. George, we do need this.
We're still.
So much that we've had to put into a bylaw.
Any other question? So I need a, a motion, uh, to, uh, to pass this resolution for bylaw eighty-seven, third reading.
I so move.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, a resolution for, uh, third and final reading of the bylaw twenty-five B twenty-two oh one, amendment to the zoning bylaw twenty-five B, we have the hearing completed, we consider the input. Any questions or, or, or comments about it? Excellent. A move motion.
I'll make a motion that we move the bylaw number twenty-five B dash two-two zero one.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and now we go back to Alex, uh, Municipal Plan.
So we've been working on, uh, the background study for the new municipal plan. Back before we knew, uh, a lot of details about local governance reform, um, and I will mention that. But just a bit of background on background studies. Uh, they are legislated by the Community Planning Act. And basically they, they say for a municipality that's, that's doing a municipal plan, um, you need a, you need studies of the economy, finances, resources, population, land use, transportation, municipal services, and anything else related to present or future economic, social, and physical conditions. So just about everything. But we do, uh, we do try to narrow it down a little bit. And the process we go into for doing a background study, um, is we look at the previous studies, the previous municipal plan. We look at the available statistical information and at that time, um, census-wise, that was twenty sixteen. So it's nice to get some new data, but we still don't know a lot of details. Um, and we'll, we'll really have to finish the municipal plan before we get all of those details, but I think we do have a good enough sense of what's going on. Do a lot of mapping, uh, that's one of the best ways to kind of understand geographically what's happening, looking at different types of land use patterns. Uh, we had a good discussion with town staff, um, Jason, um, Chris, and some other folks, uh, to get kind of that, um, internal look. But that's, that's really just the beginning, um, because we really haven't heard much from council on this. And then we really need to open it up to the rest of the public. And we need, there is gonna be some key informant stakeholders, you know, probably some folks in the industrial park, large businesses, uh, some of the institutions in town. So, uh, they'll, we'll, we'll be going through that process as we're drafting the municipal plan. Um, we'll probably also do a survey as well to capture, uh, people's opinions who can't come out to an open house or, you know, just, uh, would rather engage that way. Just, you know, it's, it's hard to do this type of planning and we know there's all of these big changes coming. Um, and, and it was interesting to hear the discussion earlier on, uh, how representation is probably going to change. Um, one, one thing to keep in mind, uh, regionally is if you look at infrastructure, while population-wise, St. George is, is only six percent of the new entity. If you look at infrastructure, water, sewers, roads, a lot of that is in St. George. So in the municipal planning process, we still feel like it's very important to have a municipal plan for, um, we're kind of calling it the town site, what is, what is now the municipal boundaries, although, um, that might even, you might even think of in some ways shrinking that because you have these, these large agricultural areas on the edge of town, um, that are, are worth protecting as, as agricultural lands. So maybe you actually want that developed area to be even more focused. So, uh, the areas that we looked at, and I'm gonna go through an eighty-page report in about, uh, two minutes here, but I'm, I'm here for questions and, uh, there is a lot of information there. It is very high-level and we, we need to discuss all, all this information, um, with the public. Demographics, uh, I already talked about the population growth. In terms of housing, uh, this is such an important area everywhere in the community. We're just having a discussion, um, about the Twelve Neighbors Project in Fredericton, where they're doing tiny homes. Um, and that is a particular solution to a particular problem and, um, might not be appropriate for St. George, but there certainly are needs and it's great to hear that, that RFP did have some interest. We're actually, uh, the Service Commission has some funding from the federal government right now and we're updating a need study we did in twenty twenty, um, as well as looking specifically at vulnerable populations. So we'll have. specifically at vulnerable populations, so we'll have a lot more information on specific housing needs and issues, um, should have that in June, um, and that's gonna give us a lot of information, uh, but we'll have, we'll have, you know, preliminary information about that before, as we're drafting the municipal plan. So, when it comes to housing policies, what's the right type of housing, how do you encourage that? Um, that's personally something I care a lot about, so, um, that, that will be a big focus. Um, economy and commercial, uh, operations, um, there's a lot of good stuff happening in St. George, the industrial park, uh, is, you know, doing well, um, there's a great retail section on Main Street, um, there's a couple of opportunities, I think, especially for tourism, um, and, uh, water-based tourism, agritourism, um, things that maybe aren't, you're not seeing quite so much right now, but I think there's a lot of opportunities as well as, uh, some areas around the highway for maybe larger format commercial, um, maybe some type of warehousing, uh, there's land there that the municipality owns that, um, there's opportunities. Uh, we're just going through the list here, um, environment and climate change, uh, you know, the, the importance of continuing to adapt and monitor what's happening, um, you know, we're gonna probably seeing increased rainfall, um, while St. George is not coastal, it is still impacted by coastal patterns, uh, sea level rise might impact the MAG, um, and, uh, there's, there's also the existing flood plain to the north of the town, um, that needs to be taken into consideration, uh, as we plan for it. Municipal finances and services, um, generally, uh, the town appears to be in a good fiscal position, um, everything's gonna change with local governance reform, um, but hopefully there's, there's still, uh, good fiscal practices going forward, um, and the town does have a lot of serviced areas, the, you know, water and sewer services do, um, reach most areas of the town, um, and as, uh, you know, the boundaries expand, whether that, those services should be expanded as well, that's, that's gonna be an important question. Best practices are to make sure that if services are expanding, that property tax revenue is paying for those services, and the town isn't going into debt, um, to pay for them. Uh, transportation, um, you know, we, uh, traffic calming, um, we heard about speeding tonight, um, and a lot of the impact, a lot of the conversation is always on enforcement and making sure the police are doing their job, and that's very important, um, but there are lots of things that can be done with road design that can help people, um, slow down, um, just, just by putting, uh, more things visually in their way. Um, active transportation is another important area for recreation, uh, tourism as well, uh, the Coastal Link Trail is an exciting opportunity that's, that's going to be coming through town, and already there's a lot of great, um, assets with the waterfront trail, uh, the marsh, um, so building on those, and, uh, you know, maybe having some kind of tourism strategy, there's, there's a lot of energy around that right now. Um, looking at the industrial park, um, you know, there's a lot of, there's expansion happening there, but there's also opportunity, and so, making sure that as expansion happens, it, it happens in a planned way, and that, um, you know, there, if there's infrastructure that's needed, um, it's, it's being placed appropriately at the right times. Agriculture and resource development, uh, huge growth area, no pun intended, um, as I already mentioned, uh, you know, you have these agricultural lands, and, and really, um, not just in terms of how they're being used, but if you look at soil maps and classification, uh, some of the best agricultural lands in, in the county and in the region are in St. George, and a lot of them are zoned for agriculture right now, um, so moving forward, um, you know, maybe even protecting those even more, uh, trying to limit residential growth there, um, those, those are some things to think about. Recreation and entertainment, uh, I've already touched on active transportation, um, but again, a huge opportunity is the water systems in and around St. George, you've got the river, you've got the ocean, and you've got Lake Utopia, and there's, there's ways you can connect through all of them, um, and there's, uh, especially where the Day Adventure Center is now, um, you know, there's, uh, I think some attempts at revitalization, and, and those are great, um, but again, that's, that's a huge opportunity for the town, um, you could even think of things like, um, you know, day arenas and, and ways to get more boaters, um, into town, onto Main Street, using the shops and stuff. Land use, um, you know, again, if you think of Main Street, it's, it's a great sort of mixed-use area where you've got shops, you've got, um, offices, you've got people living there, it's walkable, um, that's, that's something that could maybe be expanded throughout town. I've already talked about the agricultural land and maybe trying to limit where urban growth is happening. If you read through the background study, we've identified all of these different, um, areas where, uh, you could have industrial growth, um, which should only happen in the industrial park. You could have agricultural growth, which would happen on the outskirts of town, you could have residential growth, which ideally would be happening in those already built-up areas where things are walkable, um, which does mean densification, uh, and there's other, other suggestions like that around how you actually plan where different, um, things are happening in the community, a little bit more generally than zoning, um, but in a way that, um, you know, sets clear municipal priorities. So, that's everything we covered in the background study, um, and, and that will all feed into policies that are in the municipal plan, and eventually that gets down into the zoning bylaw, um, specifically for land use. So, our next steps are, we will refine the background study based on your feedback, um, because we're, we do want to get this all done before local governance reform, um, really kicks in, uh, we, we do have a fairly quick timeline, we're aiming for first reading in June, um, which means presenting, had doing a formal presentation of the municipal plan, uh, in, in May, um, which means we really need to start public consultation, um, in the next few months, so, uh, the sooner we get, uh, council's feedback on the background study, um, we're gonna start drafting municipal plan, um, as soon as possible, because, again, there's a lot of work to do in a fairly condensed timeline. Um, we, we, we have done work like this before, uh, so it's not, it's on our first rodeo, but it's very important, when you do this type of work, to really understand the local place you're doing the work in, um, get really good feedback from the public, there's a lot of technology to help with that, um, but doing things in person too, hopefully COVID will allow us to do that. Uh, I think that's about five minutes, and that's a lot of information, so I'll stop there, but if there are any questions, I'm here, and, um, we can continue this dialogue, uh, you know, over email, um, through Jason, um, we can do working sessions with council, um, you know, really, really however we go from here, we're gonna keep on working and get you a really good municipal plan.
Thank you, Alex, that was a very useful, um, introduction. Uh, I just want to actually, because you, you asked a question...
Yeah.
To actually help you meet the, the, the schedule that you put forward. Uh, I got, I got, I got, um, a tentative, uh, schedule...
Okay.
Also before from, from, uh, from the other Alex.
Yep.
And, and, uh, you mentioned, um, I guess, the milestone of, uh, the council giving you feedback.
Yeah.
When you would like to actually have that from, from this council?
Well...
To actually help you meet this, this...
So, we have, the background study is, that's, um, that's a good opportunity to say, you know, you've covered a lot here, we, we have covered a lot, um, but there's probably things we missed, so, if you read through it and you say, hey, you know, you're talking about, um, the industrial park, um, and, actually, you know, there's a great opportunity for a new industrial area over here somewhere or something, I, I don't know, that, that might be a terrible example, but things like that. Um, if you have ideas that we've missed, um, because you've been elected to represent the town, uh, and, you know, you, you intimately know the town in a way that we don't, um, that's what we would love feedback on right now, and that will help us draft policies, uh, and we have suggestions for policies in the background study, um, and those are the policies that end up in the municipal plan. So, right now is kind of the general, here's the things about town that are really important to know as you make policies for the town, and then, um, you know, we hope to have the municipal plan drafted, um, oh, February, March. We'll probably start in March, um, and, and then we'll have actual policies, and so it's important to get feedback on those too, um, and tend to know, well, it's, it's a little bit awkward, because we don't know who the council is that will be enacting them come a few years down the line, but at least initially, it's going to be you folks, so we need to know, is this something that you will, it's your municipal plan?
So, what, what can we...
Oh, Dan, I have a question.
Yeah.
When can we expect a physical copy?
Of the background study?
Yeah.
We can get that printed this week.
Okay.
We'll, we'll include the, the background study, uh, printed, and, uh, copy of that of the current municipal plan too.
Yes.
Put that together like a council book.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's another great thing, if you read through the current municipal plan, and, you know, you say, this is...
It's here.
Yeah, this is a great policy, and I've read through it, and there are things in there that are really good, um, and then there are other things that, um, you know, we've actually, um, there's, there's something about, uh, ground for, um, commercial on Main Street, um, and that's something that we've, last council, we actually did a zoning amendment around that, um, because it was a little bit too restrictive, and it only needs to be the front of the building on Main Street, it doesn't matter what's happening in the back. Um, so, reading through municipal plan and understanding what the current policies are, and as counselors, what you think works and helps, and what you think, um, don't, and don't align with the vision of the town anymore, because it's ten years old.
Can I ask you, the, the, the new models of, uh, of, uh, municipal plans?
Mm-hmm.
Are they very different than the existing one?
Not terribly different. Um, they're gener- I mean, the Community Planning Act says you have to have policies and proposals, um, and that, you know, generally, you end up with certain types of language, so council shall do certain things, um, council may, council shall encourage, um, so the language tends to be fairly standard. The, the land use map, that's something we want to do a little bit differently, um, just because they tend to be second zoning maps, and you end up doing a lot of unnecessary administrative things, um, so we want to focus more on general areas, um, but, uh, having it as policies and proposals, that's, that's something that comes from the Community Planning Act. I have seen from other jurisdictions, you can find, um, you know, municipal plans that are a lot more, um, reader-friendly, I guess, that aren't quite so, um, just text-heavy, um, I, I've seen other examples, and, and it is, uh, Alex and I talk a lot about how can we make these things better, and, and something that people really own, because there is, a lot of times you do municipal plan, it just sits on a shelf, and that's not what anybody wants, so, um, we're definitely open to new ideas, it's just, the policies and proposals have to be there.
Well, it's a very important document, because, you know, when conflicts arise, you always go to the, to the Bible...
Yeah.
Of, 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 of the municipality, so I, you know, I, I would take it very seriously. Um, I, I, you, you, I just, I may have, uh, heard it wrongly, you mentioned about an RFP now about housing, micro housing, is it...
Oh, yeah, no, so I, I, the town has received an RFP for some land, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not micro housing. I was talking about the Fredericton one...
Okay.
Just to sort of link the conversation we were having earlier to this one, but no, those are totally...
Because this is not the kind of thing that the community should have a major impact about...
Yeah.
Input, about, you know, about whether or not it's the kind of...
Well, and what type of housing is right. So, we, we need, we're doing our need study, we'll get a sense from people what type of housing they're looking for...
Yeah.
Um, but it's also really important for a community to say, these are the types of housing, um, it, it should be a conversation, um, you know, these are the types of housing that are appropriate in our community, because, um, you know, historically, St. George has made decisions about mini homes, and said, if we're gonna have mini homes, they're gonna be in a mini home park. That's the decision that was made. Um, that may be the way that St. George wants to continue, um, and there wouldn't be anything wrong with that, but St. George might also want to say, you know, mini homes are a sort of new model of affordable housing, um, there may be ways to allow them in other places that don't detract from the character of the community, but that's, that's up to the community to, to figure those things out, and, and obviously, finding consensus on that can be a bit of a challenge, but, um, that's part of the work that we do.
That was, that was a good point there too, because that's a great example for St. George, where, you know, past municipal plans focused on, um, you know, mini homes of a certain age, um, you know, so it had to be a fairly newer mini homes, because there were problems at that time, uh, with older mini homes coming into the town limits, and, and, um, so sort of, you know, that was addressing, I guess, the current environment in St. George, so, you know, maybe that has changed, maybe, you know, this council feels that, you know, it should be okay to put in, you know, a twenty-five-year-old mini home on Brunswick Street on the Main Street, um, you know, wants to reintroduce that, and, you know, it's also important to understand how do we, how that came into, into being, um, so, you know, there could be other, other examples of that, you know, maybe there's members of council that wish to really focus on, you know, accessibility, uh, you know, within commercial properties being a, a very big and important part of, of the new plan, so, um, so, yeah, it, it does come back to, to you guys to sort of take a look through this and say, you know, how, you know, how do you vision, especially the next ten years or plus ten years, or...
Yeah.
Whenever, I guess, it's ratified, um, you know, for, for what, what St. George looks like, so...
And you can also look at, um, uh, look at some other communities and what they've done for municipal plans, so St. Andrews, that's a municipal plan we worked on, um, St. Stephen, we had some input into that as well, but, you know, there's, uh, every municipality has one, they're all a little bit different, and there's, um, I look at them all the time and try and steal policies that I think would work in other places, so, um, that's another good way to engage with it.
Well, we'll endeavor to actually give you some, I mean, we'll endeavor to actually start the communications, uh, very, very, in a few weeks, I mean, if you want to actually meet that schedule, so, the, from what I see, what they gave me is, is, uh, in March, which is like in, in, in a few weeks, uh, the town should start hosting informal virtual open house meetings, and that's something for Jason to actually, um, put a, put a start on, and start inviting input from people. Um, yeah, um, any question? Thank you again, Alex.
You're very welcome, and that's it for tonight, so, I will see you all later. Maybe one of those open houses.
Yeah, we'll go to another one now, which is, uh, policy on, uh, vehicle idling policy, fifty-four A twenty-twenty-two. I just want to actually, before I, 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 to have Jason give us some feedback from the staff, uh, on a draft proposal that we made, and then we can actually start opening for questions or comments.
Uh, yeah, so the original, um, I guess, the, the original vehicle idling policy was brought forth by Council Deterakis, um, and, uh, so we did, we did, we did go through that, there was some, there was some repetitiveness in it, we, we cleaned it up and, uh, and put it into the current draft form, uh, that it is, um, you know, we had some discussions in-house with, uh, with, with staff, uh, just talking about, um, especially around the, the, the item of, uh, you know, thirty seconds or three minutes, um, so that sort of provided both options, uh, there, so, um, but outside of what, what's, uh, what's currently in the draft state, nothing really more to add.
But don't we already have a policy in place for the, for the idling?
Uh, nothing for the town, uh, there is provincial, um, idling, um, but it wouldn't be specific to the town. Pardon me?
The DTI policy, which is...
There is a DTI policy, yeah.
And that was, by the way, uh, it was, um, uh, one of the recommendations that came with the, the...
The ECW.
The ECW, the Eastern, Eastern Charlotte Waterways.
And on that point, you know, that was one of the two action plans, you know, this and, uh, extending more walking trails, which is one thing we are doing, so, we have one of the two, uh, at this point.
Uh, so, we have a policy, um, um, before we did not have a policy, and it's better to have a policy than having no policy. Um, I spoke with Council Deterakis, and that one was modeled after another municipality, I, I, that's why I asked Jason to actually talk to the staff and see, uh, how we can simplify it, and, and, and what, what, the, the, like, the thing that actually prompted that, and we should mention it, was input from, from, from residents, who actually saw some examples, and they said, that's not right. So, even having a policy and having Jason to tell to the staff when they hire them, we have a policy, and you should not be just, or just leaving the car running while you are doing other stuff. That can be, uh, uh, something important, and we have a duty to do it. Uh, so, um, do you have any specific questions about the policy that Jason proposed?
I do have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I guess, there's no provision when a, um, town employee uses their own personal vehicle? Does that policy, does that, is a policy like this still, uh, is enforced, uh, under this policy?
If an employee, if an employee uses their own vehicle?
Yes, for example... For example, I know that Jason puts the town sign on his vehicle. And he uses his personal vehicle for town business during that period of time. Does this policy apply?
In that, yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean when I say it.
If you're using, yeah. Outside of that, like other, you know, public works.
If you're out doing your own thing, that's fine, but.
Yeah.
If you're working for the town during town hours with a, with a town identifier.
Exactly.
You should, you should be enforced.
Definitely.
There's no provision for that in here.
Uh, no, it'd be mostly case by case. But yes, anything that would be identified as a town or a, a sponsored vehicle of the town, exactly.
Like there's, I, how I look at this, like there are existential issues, like climate change, which was just brought up by Alexander. And then there are real life managing issues. So I think with this policy, the least that we can do is raise awareness.
Yes. Yeah, I agree.
How would we, if we were to adopt it, how would it be policed though? How would you, you know, I mean, is it going to be policed? How do you know that Joe, Joe so-and-so has got his vehicle going along for 30 seconds? You know what I mean?
You know, if it's Donald Lagoon, he's doing it by himself. I mean, we really wouldn't. I mean, there's certain, there are, you know, there are things.
Well, if he's down at the lagoon and, 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 and Leonard passes, he has an obligation to save the guy. Hey, guy, you know, you're not supposed to leave the truck. So. Leonard should be part of the, essentially the enforcement, policing.
Yeah, the obligation beyond leadership.
If something happens on Main Street or somebody, some, some students are cutting the grass and they leave the truck running, as it happened before. We may be arrange them, who is policing. I mean, it's, it's, but having the policy is a big, is a big, it, it is a first step to actually raise awareness.
Well, you can't police without the policy.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly.
Did the previous council commit to greenhouse gases by a certain date?
Yes, they did.
Restrict them already?
To follow the action plans.
It was around the same time, wasn't it?
Around, around the same time for the ECW report? Yeah, it was 2017.
2017, but we started working with ECW in 2013. So there's a long history between us and that, that organization.
One thing I want to say and applies to, to our, to our, some additional discussion that I have with ECW this week. Is essentially all these studies and all these recommendations do not come free. They come up from money that we pay. And you hear a lot, a lot, a lot of complaints about carbon tax and all that. So the worst thing that we can do. With the carbon tax that we complain is to waste it. So if, if, if we spend money for, for someone to look at something and make some recommendations. We have an obligation to follow up on that. And to me, that, that, that is perhaps the most important thing you can take away from introducing a thing like that. So any other question?
So how will it be affected if we, if we adopt this policy and then we become, which we do, become part of Area 53? Are we, you know, are we going to be able to extend it to the whole of Area 53?
That's a very good point. And that's a very good point. And I believe that that's part of, actually, that's part of our leadership in this transition, transition thing. And we say, you know, St. George, and actually I hope Black Harbor, because the, Black Harbor gets the, 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 the lion's share of, of. Eastern Charlotte, Charlotte Waterways engagement, both in terms of, of, of actual money, but also. So, I mean, yeah, we can actually try to get in touch with Black Harbor and say, you know, hey, guys, we started this discussion. It is something that everybody talks about. I mean, Alex talked about it. So we, 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 we can actually try to push it on to a larger, a larger thing. But fundamentally, it will be, you know, it will be the, the CAO who will actually be looking after these things, one way or the other.
And, and I think that as with any policies, you know, all the policies of the two entities will be brought together and, you know, looked at saying, okay, this is a policy that. You know, we should have adopted into the new entity. You know, if it's not part of that policy grouping, it may be looked at later down the road. Where if it is a policy, you know, it'd be looked at probably fairly soon.
But the commitment to, to reduce greenhouse gases by 30% by 2030 is not unique just to our municipality. There are other, other municipalities in Charlotte County that are, that also agree to it.
CHAO had, had, had the, the mayor of, of St. Andrews. Speaking exactly about that, that, you know, that they, they, they recognize it and they are working towards. So we cannot just let it, let it, let it go. We should be showing that we, we are on the ball. Any questions, comments more about the policy? And if there are not, I would, I would propose that we actually put it on the floor and, and have a motion to actually pass on.
I understand what you're doing with the policy, but my question is, how is this going to be enforced? We don't have a bylaw officer per se just for the town of St. George. And it's, I'm just wondering how, how is this policy going to be enforced? That's a question I would like to answer.
I mean, I guess it comes down to, you know, back to, it would, it would, the illness would be on the leadership. You know, we have policies like an HR policy. You know, with, we have our own staffing, social media policies. You know, so those would, would fall under sort of, under that. Without a policy like this, this summer, we could have a, a student, you know, start a car and idle it and walk away and leave it. We could say, you know, you shouldn't do that. But with a policy will give us the ability to say there's, there's something there.
Gives a tool to Jason, where he hires someone on the first day to say, you know, we have this policy, this policy, and we have an idling vehicle policy.
And the intention, like I said, like, I, because I was looking through the report and the idling policy that they, that they provided, it was more so for residential, I understood. And that said, it wasn't enforceable, but it was with the intention of creating awareness on the issue. So that's, that's, that's the ultimate goal.
But it is, it does ultimately boil down to this, you know, the, the supervisor's ability to enforce this. If the Works Department students, for example, are. Sitting in a, in an air-conditioned truck or they've got the truck going with the air conditioning while they're off doing, or whipper snipping or whatever. And we have a policy in place, it would be the supervisor's role and responsibility to bring that to their attention and stop that.
Well, actually, the supervisor should actually, on the first day that they hire them. Before he gives them the truck, he says, here are the keys, here is, you know, how, how you, you use the four-wheel drive. And by the way.
Well, orientation should take care of that.
This is how I see it. This is how, how I see, as the role of the town, the role of the supervision, the role of the manager, who actually makes sure of this.
When we brought on the new public works member. You know, we had a sheet that we went through, all the checklist of different policies. You know, this would be added into it to say this is a policy that we're covering. Yes, you've received it, you've understood it and check mark, sign it.
Okay, so can I have a, if, if there are no questions and there are no any concerns about it, I, I'd like to have a motion to actually pass on this policy. A resolution to the council to actually pass on 50 policy, 58A 2022, vehicle idling policy. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded?
I'll second it.
Your favor? Barbara?
Still think so.
You think? Okay. Let me, let me start from the other side. Brenda?
I have an issue with this. My thing is, is in the winter time, like now, a night when it could go down to minus 20, 25. We have a major leak or whatever, the guys have the truck running because they need to keep getting in and out to keep warm. Is this policy going to hurt?
There's an exception for that.
There are exceptions?
There would be the exception, I guess, as long as they maintain. You know, they're on the job site with the, with hazard lights indicators going.
Right.
As part of that, as part of that job, they would, yes.
Or for emergencies, you know, if there's an emergency, they have to actually, you know, they are attempting to fire and they need to have the truck running through the radios or whatever.
Yes.
There is an exception for that. I mean, that, that's common sense. It's not, it's not a.
Well, we might think it's common.
No, it's actually there. I listed that draft, it was in there, Jason. I don't know if you took it out.
No, it's here.
There is an exception. There's an exception. Uh, 4-2 is a list of exception, uh, exceptions.
An exception is written in the policy. So. Let's see who else may be ready to actually. Sam?
No.
You say Sam. Sam says no. Noted. Councilor Colton?
Part of me says yes and part of me says no, and I know I have to make a decision.
I think you should vote yes. You have children, right? You have children?
No.
You don't have children? Oh, you don't have children, okay.
No.
Well, okay. So we have that and to, to Brenda now. Brenda?
No.
No, Brenda says no. So Barbara, you have children and grandchildren.
I have grandchildren and children. I do. I'm, I'm torn because I, yeah, I'm torn. Go ahead, now, at least two ladies are almost doing it.
They, they did yet.
Yeah, we're dead.
Yeah.
If it makes you feel better, our tax dollars actually paid for.
That's a very good point. That's a very, very good point because that issue came about when somebody saw. Student running a truck, which we're paying, we're paying for the maintenance and for the gas and running there. And it was all right with the policy because we don't have a policy. And now there is a policy on the table and we have two noes yet. So I think that, that, that is enough for someone to get encouraged to have something.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. This, this came from a complaint.
Yes, this came from a complaint.
Well, why didn't you say that at the beginning? This was a complaint.
Oh, sorry. I mean, actually.
I didn't know that.
It was conceived out of a complaint.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That came from a complaint that I have raised a long time ago, last summer, actually.
Yes, it was.
It was last summer. And, you know.
It was addressed to.
To three, three councils.
Three councils, yeah.
Because I do have a problem with running it for hours for the cooling. I don't for the feet because I think it would be very hard to wear.
But the exceptions are, for me, the exceptions are fair because if it's, if it's, if it's plus 27 degrees, then they have the opportunity to go in and cool. And if it's as low, as cool as minus five, they have the ability to go and get warm.
I wrote that, too.
So it's not, it's not like you cannot ever idle it. It's like idling it unnecessarily.
So with that, we'll help you, Brenda. That came from a complaint.
Well, thank you for finally filling me in on that because I felt you should tell people, councillors, that before you put in a policy that it's a complaint.
The emails that have sent out.
I'm still a no.
But you're still a no, although it came from a complaint.
Let me clarify that not every complaint is, is results in a policy. Some people at home do know that, too, so.
So Barbara, the weight of the words on your shoulders.
Well, that's hard, isn't it?
The weight of the words on your shoulders.
In the interest of my children and my grandchildren, then I suppose I should say yes.
And I would salute that. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. And I would vote yes. So have a policy, an idling policy, which is a step towards. Reducing our carbon gases. I'm very, I'm very proud of that. And I should knock the hammer. And we move on to the next one, which Habitat for Humanity. And Jason had prepared something, but you can still introduce it again.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship. So just, just to review the email sent previously out to council. That we have, currently, right now, we have a, an agreement with Habitat for, Habitat for Humanity with a couple of properties. Currently, the, the last agreement. Gave it, gave them until a certain amount of time to complete their project. And of course, with the pandemic, unfortunately, that, that wasn't really reached and that was. In communication with Habitat for Humanity, that was their, their, their reason, certainly to not be able to be, have, have their project completed by October 2021. In hindsight, you know, when we developed that, that project or that agreement in, in 2020, I think it was in March. Pandemic was fairly new. I guess if we would have known everything we know now, we probably would have put it to at least 2022, looking ahead. So, so really what we're looking at now is to extend the agreement to October 2023. That has, you know, that, that does meet, meet the wishes of Habitat for Humanity. They do feel that within that time period, they'll be able to address the project. So that is where it's at right now. It's to go from October 2021 to extend the agreement until October 2023.
I just want to add what Jason said, that the reason for which we have the discussion is because the way that Habitat for Humanity works. Is they engage with the community college. And the community college does a lot of the prefabrication. They bring it up site and then community groups like your church or other people can get in there and start helping and they prepare. And I, 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 I just want to add, before I open it for, 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 for other questions. I just want to add that the quality of their homes that they are producing and their, what's happening to these, these homes. Creates an engagement between ownership and the home that makes the whole community feeling good about what, what has actually been delivered. And we have one example already in St. George where this thing has worked excellently. So I, I'm looking forward to actually extending that and allowing, I know that there is a delay. Hopefully, I mean, the, the COVID is going to go away and next year or the year after, we're going to have perhaps another two, two homes of Habitat for Humanity there. So I, 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 I want a motion to essentially approve. The extension that has been drafted.
I'll make that motion when we extend the Habitat from October 21 to October 23 here. Longstir Bill.
Your favor?
Aye.
And where are we now? Oh my God, that's a long business. Summer Festival and Events. Jason? Can you introduce the subject, Chris?
So we are approaching a point where we start looking ahead to the summertime for events. Whether that's the typical July weekend events that we have, as well as looking at music events throughout the summer months. So. Certainly this year, we hope that COVID releases us to have more open events. Wasn't too bad last year. We were able to have some events. But, you know, for booking purposes, we have much the same budget as we did last year. But for booking purposes and looking ahead, it's now the time that we start to do those, that planning.
Our overall battle for this, this activity is.
Yep.
20K.
Yep.
Okay, we have 20K.
Yeah.
And.
Eventually, out on the third weekend of July. And the reason why we've always held it on that weekend. Is because it doesn't interfere like with St. Stephen, St. Andrews, Chocolate Fest and everything. So that's why. St. George had Thurs always the third weekend of July.
Well. That was one, one of the, one of the, the feedback that I received last year. That we should actually be having some coordination with other communities because sometimes on the same week, there were two events, the same week.
But that was, was always not happening.
That's why the third week of July was deemed the week years and years ago. And it's been that way right up until last year and because of COVID, things got all mixed up.
I think it should go back to be called Family Fun Days, actually.
Do you want?
It should be called St. George Family Fun Days. Like it used to be.
I think we changed that, didn't we? Didn't we change that?
Yes.
I thought we, I thought we did.
I thought we should go back to Family Fun Days.
And those are all important parts of this festival, too, because, you know, we do promotional and, and to get, to get, you know, printed material. We want to have, have enough time to, to get that stuff done and decided upon.
I feel too, that since it's come, this council's last year together. I feel that the council should be able to organize it. We all can do different things. We can all do it and then we can all, we all have friends that we know that will volunteer to help us. And I just feel that it should be councils last year together. I feel we should put it on together as. Council not hiring anybody else to do it for us. That's my opinion.
Well, if, 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 if Councilor Brenda can bring a plan with the specific volunteers who will commit to a, a schedule to meet the thing, I will not have any objection to that.
We don't need a schedule. All we need is to agree that it's going to be such and such a name, that it'll be the third week in July. And there's enough of us here that know what to do. I mean, there's three of us that aren't working. The other three are working. So we just make the plan so that we can meet with those three others. And Alexa, you love working with the smaller children. I mean, that's your, you know, that's your thing, is what I'm saying. Brenda likes, she likes to do the memorial things. And me, I have no. And me, I have no plans at all of contacting people for music things, and my suggestion, and again, I'm just suggesting this, there's, it should be all week long, and there should be something every night of the week, and we can say to the Multicultural Association, you can, you know, do you want to put something on this night, and somebody else put something on that night.
So can we, can we name you as the project manager who will actually give us a plan, like in a month, to actually look and approve?
Sure, I'll do it.
That is what, that would be good, so.
One of the issues that we faced with the last Summer's Fest was the fact that we did not have volunteers, that was like.
Don't you worry about that, Dylan, I will find the volunteers, I'll dig them up wherever I can, if I have to go up to the cemetery or whatever.
Because that's what I.
That would be a great, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because like.
No, I just feel that we can all do it.
It was a short timeline and not volunteers, and it really.
Like the lanterns, at first, when that first started, that was a memorial for our first responders, and that went over very well with the first responders, it was for any first responder that passed, anything. Then we thought the next year, let's make it for anybody who has lost a loved one with the first responders, and that's how that originally started. And I do have something to say, for the mayor to send out an email to me and to all the other councilors, saying he didn't give a damn about the lanterns, I was offended by that.
And you're entitled to your thing, yes, yes.
Because to me, that was an insult to any first responders or anyone who's ever lost a loved one that has ever purchased a lantern for that service, and maybe that's not your thing, but I, it's, I feel very strongly about it. I went to Mrs. Hat, I've got all the lantern things for her, so for you to say that, that really hurt, because my loved one was one of those ones.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Last year's festival, the only thing that you did is you went inside a canoe and just pushed a ladder. I've worked there every day for five weeks, and I just wanted to say that we need volunteers, we don't have volunteers, but since Nancy is going to take it over, in a month's time, we'll have a plan, we'll have some names, and we can make a decision. And that's the way to go through. And if you need some more counseling about this heart, no, please do not hesitate to actually, we'll have some support. But the most important thing that I would like to actually add is that in addition to all this grieving, a festival is also a time to enjoy, a time to actually listen to music, to have children play, it's not necessarily a funeral-focused activity.
It's for everybody who's lost someone, or everybody who, even if you have not lost someone, but even if there was some people don't.
So can you have a motion, can you have a motion for, to actually pursue the proposal that Councilor Colton put forward, to actually have a plan?
Do you need a motion, or you just need, Nancy has agreed to get?
Well, I think it's actually a resolution, we make a resolution here to actually give this responsibility to Nancy to come forward with a proposal. Nancy, how long you want, month to month, to actually give us something?
Give you something by the middle of next month.
Excellent, so recorded.
That's the Ides of Marge.
I'm sorry? What's the significance of that?
The Ides of Marge?
Yes.
That's a Shakespeare term.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not in the. Do you have enough lanterns from last year? Do you have enough lanterns from last year? We bought a whole bunch.
We have new lanterns.
You have all the new.
No, we don't want to use those lanterns again.
The issue was, the lanterns, it was a manufacturer error.
We had a Viking ship fire last year, that's just all we'll say, this year Brenda's going to look after it, and it's going to be different.
Councilor Allison pointed out, she did receive the ones that were used in the past.
They look like flowers, and they won't go up in flames.
All business who don't have anyone. Good correspondence, always interesting. We have a letter from David Armstrong. I'm sure you're ready to go. Do you want to make any comment?
No, it's been distributed for council for review, been addressed to mayor and council.
Let me start from Brenda, if she wants to add anything to that correspondence, a comment or correspondence, or?
No, I have nothing to say, of course.
Sam?
No, nothing.
I just have one question, can we ask, who are the residents, or if we can't ask the names, how many are there, because it comes from concerned Riverview Avenue citizens? I would just like to know the number, or like how many, like if it's ten, fifteen? And there's a couple of things down in through the letter that it's, they're saying "we", and I wanted to know who "we" was, it's, I'm just curious. And it's also saying about the purchasing of the sign and moving it to another location in Riverview Avenue, I would just like some clarification on the letter, that's all.
Okay. Of course, Mr. Armstrong not here to clarify it. I think, I think one of the things that was coming out of that letter was we made a decision to actually not to purchase one because of cost considerations, and he raised the issue that they are prepared to actually, they, they, the community, the local community of Riverview Avenue, to actually purchase one if we commit to actually allow them to install it, and to me, that's the most important thing. But anyways.
Well, then if this speed sign is purchased by the residents of the concerned citizens, it says there that the sign would be placed at the same location as the previous demonstration sign, and then moved to another location on Riverview Avenue in six months. So does that mean that that sign from the concerned citizens wants to be purchased only for Riverview Avenue, and then it's to be moved to another location?
On Riverview Avenue.
On Riverview Avenue, and in all honesty, as I mentioned last month, there's more places on Riverview Avenue, too, so I do have a problem with us as a council saying, yeah, you can purchase a sign and put it up on Riverview Avenue.
Put it on his own property, he can't stop, he puts it up on his own property.
So essentially, if they give us a horse, we check down the teeth and we say, nah.
Pardon, say that again.
Say something, you know, if they give you a horse, you don't check its teeth, you get it, but you say, you know, it's a concern if they give you a horse. Not, Barbara?
I have the same concern, if they put it on their private property, that's, that's nothing to do with the town, but I agree, there are lots more places in town where there's speeding, where I live, I almost get creamed every day, and Jason's already had a letter about Campbell Hill and South Street, so, you know, I think we're better off doing what we were going to do and get this sign from the RSC, and put it all over the place.
Move it around to the various places.
It's not just, Riverview Avenue is not the only place that has a speeding problem.
Yeah. No, it's, yeah.
I understand the name, it's very vocal about it, that's not, you know, that's fair enough, but, I mean, there are other places that have the same problem.
And just to raise as well, it was brought up in last council, previous council, to sort of the same, similar offer, issue that we have is residents buying any type of traffic signs, maybe a speed radar here, but maybe another resident may say, well, look, I want to install a flashing amber light, you know, another resident will say, well, I want to buy an actual speed sign, you know, and I guess if it's been given ahead to another resident to do that, I'm going to install a thirty-kilometer speed sign in front of my house, as long as it's somewhat in my property. That's, that's one of the issues we run into this, with, you know, granting residents saying, yes, you can install traffic calming or traffic alert type of devices, you know, a device such as a speed sign, if it's not under our jurisdiction, can be altered, I mean, maybe a resident one day could go out and say, well, it's a long weekend, I'm going to bring the speed sign, the speed limit down, on their own will, you know, that does cause a lot of traffic issues. And then there's another liability standpoint for residents installing any type of, any type of traffic calming or traffic alerts. If there's an accident, suddenly someone comes along and there's an accident, and they say, well, I was distracted by, you know, a traffic device that was installed, they could be brought into liability, so just for the protection of residents, one of the reasons why we've previously never really entertained those, you know, you can look at different stories around Canada or the United States where, you know, residents have taken upon themselves to go out and install traffic bumps in the middle of the road, and it's not their, it's not their right of way, it does cause some traffic concerns, so the only thing for something like this would be, you know, we'd receive a donation earmarked of donation of funds. Yeah, and then it would be earmarked for a certain area that we would install and that we'd have control over, that's how, that's how you would do something like that, if a resident said, look, you know, I know the speed limit's fifty kilometers on my road, I'd like another sign, maybe, if they donated money and then, you know, maybe do something like that.
If you get a horse, if somebody offers you a horse, you may say, can I have the ownership, for example?
Yeah, maybe, instead of the horse, we'll take the value of the horse and buy our own horse and.
But buy it, buy the horse, buy the horse, buy the horse.
That just avoids residents from taking the brunt of the liability.
It's the last sentence in the letter that is what I have my problem with, we are asking for your consideration and approval on this as soon as possible. I am not for approving the purchase of a private resident or private concerned citizens buying a speed sign and putting it on Town Street, that last sentence, and if I'm asked to vote, I vote no, that's just me.
Okay, so far we have progressed the discussion a bit. Go ahead.
We're still on discussion.
Yeah, I'm saying, go ahead, go ahead.
The way I look at it, as we have limited resources and as this is a problem, like I personally don't see the problem in a resident purchasing, like making that offer, that's my stance.
Okay. I guess, I'm gonna, I have some comments, too, I guess, but I want to finish all the councilors going through, and then I can, I can, go ahead, Doc.
Well, as you probably all know, I am one of the concerned residents of Riverview Avenue, but this letter did not come from me, and as you already know, I am in favor of having a speed calming device, whether it be Riverview Avenue or any other street that we have there, we shot down the offer of one so that we could get the free one that will travel all around the community for what, one month?
For the trailer?
Yeah.
It can be.
It can be extended.
It can be extended.
It's extended, we'll have to negotiate it.
Yeah, it's based on the schedule.
Yeah, based on the schedule, so, you know, we know that the traffic on Riverview Avenue is excessive, we know that, these are all facts, we know that it's there, if he wants to buy a machine, I'm in favor, for sure. It takes the financial burden off of the town.
Well, here's my point, I mean, a coin has three sides, we have concerned residents, plural, because I received comments supporting this idea, we have issues of liability, exposure to liability. Definitely, if we're going to allow a private sign to be installed on our roads, we get some liability about allowing that, because we are putting a private, if a donation is to be made, it has to be meet, it has to be meet the town's criteria, and becomes property of the town, right?
Correct.
Okay?
And it has to be used for someplace just other than one particular street?
Yeah, it's property of the town.
So the deaf sign up at, on the back street, South Street, is that, does the town own that one?
Yes, yeah, horseback riding on Manor Road, despite it being removed every year, but yes, we do.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not against having a speed sign, I'm not against that at all, because I do believe that speeding within the town of St. George is a problem, but there are more areas than, I'm just saying, Riverview Avenue, and when I read this letter, this letter indicates to me that the residents, concerned residents of Riverview Avenue will buy the sign, but they will only put it on Riverview Avenue, and then it will only be there, and it'll move from one point in Riverview Avenue to another point on Riverview Avenue, unless I've lost the ability to read.
But all due respect, Councilor Colton, you voted down, you voted no for a speed sign that could be, that could go all over for less than ten dollars, less than twenty dollars a day.
No, I voted down for purchasing a speed sign when we can get one from RSC.
But one's not enough.
Well, let me.
Well, this one that you want to purchase for Riverview Avenue is only going to be one, and it's only going to be on.
Plus you have the trailer.
You want to say order?
Yeah, I'll shut up.
Order, no, 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 we encourage debate, we are open democracy.
Okay, so Jason, that is a town road, but it's also a provincial road.
Correct.
So if we want to do something, it's half town and half provincial, we need some permission rights from the province, too, if it's part and part.
Definitely a resident installing a sign on a provincial road would also have to meet their requirements, too, so we wouldn't be able to tell a resident, yes, you can go ahead and install, install a sign on a provincial road, and the province comes along and says no, they're heavily restricted, I know that when Alex was here talking about things such as culling ways of slowing traffic down with bumpouts and islands, that's something that would have to go through the province if we were to do that on a road like Riverview Avenue or Latit Road. Things such as mirrors to see around corners are not allowed on provincial roads, even flashing amber lights, like you typically will see in older roads, they're not looked at very positively, they like to have the least amount of signage, the least number of crosswalks, so there's lots of requirements there, so even if today we said, yeah, you know what, a resident can go ahead and install, buy a sign, we wouldn't really have the right to even say that with the provincial roads, and that's like Mount Pleasant, Latit Road or Riverview Avenue, so it would, we'd then have to go back to them to say the yea or nay, and as heavily restricted as they are, I can't speak for them, but I can't see them approving something like that. I mean, they wouldn't want to set the precedence for all across the province where presidents are going out saying, I have an issue, I'm going to buy a sign and install it myself.
Well, if I can, if I can, to move the discussion forward, to move the discussion forward, in general, no one is opposing to a donation that's going to be for a socially acceptable enhancement to our community. There are questions about standards on which both provinces and the town has to get involved, and there is, there are, I mean, I don't see a problem with someone making a donation and say it's only for the children, it will not be for the adults, it happens, so, I mean, you know, having the donor putting sub provisions on how the equipment will be used, provided that meets all the other tick marks, it is okay, but there is some discussion to be done with the town, the donor with the town, and I guess the town can coordinate the same discussion with the province, right? So I, for the time being, I would just, I would just believe that we don't have the information to actually move on on that one, and we should actually ask Jason to actually take it on with the province, and then we can actually be able to give an answer back to the specific proposal, that's my suggestion moving forward. Do you have any concerns about this approach? Councilor?
No concern, if I get a concern, we're liable to accept the donation.
That's right.
In other words, if that sign's put there and something happens, like Jason said, and a guy gets a strap, or two cars come and go, oh, the town said that was great, now we're going to come on to you, Pauls.
We answer that, we answer that, we answer that, because if that sign is going to belong to the town, it's going to be approved by the province, it's going to be approved by the town, it's going to be operated by the town, and the only thing that will remain from the, essentially, the input of the donor is, of the bequest, is essentially a caveat, you know, something that will say, this sign, because I paid for it, I would like to enhance my neighborhood, which is essentially the Riverview Avenue, and I don't see a problem with that, I don't see a problem with something that we're going to own, we're going to own, it's going to be up to our standards. going to be up to our standards, we're going to be responsible to use it, okay? It's going to meet the province. I mean, there are a lot of tick marks there. And in addition, it will actually satisfy, I mean, I'm sure that somebody has some discussion with Andrea or whatever to actually see, you know, if the province is going to get, the province is going to get buy into it, okay? I mean, there is some, something to be done. But fundamentally, I don't see any problem with that. So anyways, we need to do some more additional, additional input. And I, I, I believe we should leave it there. Okay? Okay? So we dealt with that matter, correspondence, by putting an action on Jason to follow up with the province and see, I mean, after, after, find out first of all if the money is available, because somebody has to put some money on the table, one way or the other, and, and, and see if we can, how we can use it in a way that will actually satisfy the donors and also meet the requirements of the town and the province. Okay, moving on. Letter from Prag, I think we reviewed it, right?
Yeah.
Yes, we reviewed it. So that, that's done. Public presentations, the crowd?
I have a quick question.
Okay, go ahead, chief.
I heard a couple numbers floating around the room, like some sort of clarification. The population of St. George is 1570. And I heard you guys say that that is only 6% of the new entity.
That's not right.
The numbers in my head says the new entity will be 26,200. That doesn't make sense.
That's right, though.
No, it isn't. It's not right.
It can't be.
It's not right. 1507,000.
Sixteen, probably, it'll be like 85,000 people.
Exactly.
That's right. It would be 6%. You know, because the new entity is around, let's say, 8,000.
25, 30%.
Exactly.
20%.
Thank you. I think there was a, maybe a 6% increase, maybe, I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Yes. He said 4.1%.
4.1%, which was 62 people.
62 people, that's what he said.
That's why I wanted to know what it was.
Yeah, I think overall, maybe across the average for the whole entity was an increase of 6%. Maybe that's where it was, but.
And so that was the public, public.
That was just a question.
That was a quick one. Thank you, chief. Thank you. And we are coming now to the, to the part where the members of the council make statements. And I'm going to start from the right. Brenda.
As everyone is aware, we did have a missing person in town. It turned out to be a bad situation for the family. I just want to thank Charlotte County Ground Search and Rescue, they did an excellent job. The RCMP were around helping them. I just feel that they did an excellent job and the fire department was there and the guys and I, it was, it was just great to see everyone out to help. Your comment on me saying that I need help, I don't. I've been, I, my husband passed 12 years ago. You don't, maybe you didn't understand what I was trying to say about the lanterns. It's just not, it's for anybody who has a loved one anytime that was sick or anything. And yes, last year the lanterns did catch on fire. Yes, I was out in my kayak. I tried to get them out so that they wouldn't catch on fire, but there was no place to hold the candle inside. So for you to make your comment to me, I think you should apologize to the residents of this town saying you don't give a damn in your email. That's my comment for the night.
Thank you very much, Counselor Allison. Thank you. Counselor.
Ruben. Sorry.
Sam?
In regards to the winter works team, they've done a great job. The recent thing on Facebook concerning the sidewalk, the conditions in this last storm were, there's no heaters in those sidewalks and that ice will not melt. We just had, it took about four days to get things to start to come around. They had them plowed, they did salt them several times. And I mean, yes, people did have to kind of go on the road at times, it's just, it was one of those kinds of storms that we couldn't, they'd done the best they could. Our workforce is doing pretty well at this point, we're pretty well at the speed, things seem to be progressing quite well. In regards to Summerfest or Summer Days, a tentative agreement or an agenda, I guess I should say, is what we need to start with. And we must discuss whether we're going to pay volunteers or there are going to be volunteers, one or the other. Going ahead, we, we should know that. The timeframe is, you've got a little more time this year to have it, so a little more time to plan. You've got to start doing it now. In regard to the entity, there's quite a few questions. Things are moving along quite briskly. Not going to be what everybody's going to want, could be a lot of changes. And it's, it's going to come fairly quick. That's just, that's all I have at this point. Oh, I could go on about the speed sign, just to clarify. The one that we tried out was $4,500. The proposal, the one we were going to buy was $3,400 and the price came in at $3,900. Just to clarify. I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready for the old girl? Again, the, I have some questions that can be answered at later meetings or whatever. Gypsy Rest, the roof, and I was driving by and I stopped, I didn't want to drive off the road. The shingles on the rest, just the roof at Gypsy Rest need to be looked at and I don't know if we have the money, I don't know what we can do, but it's in desperate shape out I wanted to know if anything had been decided about the RFP or RFQ, however you want to say it, for the flowers for summer. I don't, we haven't heard back. I know you had said, Jason, that one person or one company had replied to your RFQ. And then I wanted to maybe put on the table for council sometime about looking at the fees for public use of this center here. It hasn't been looked at for quite a while. And as for the festival, I will, I'm like Sam, if you're going to be a volunteer, you're going to be a volunteer, you aren't going to be paid. And if you're going to be paid, then the council as a whole should agree on what the fee is that we pay those people that decide they're going to join in with us. And I will come back with some kind of a schedule to council for approval. And if you don't like it, that's okay, we'll start all over and try it again. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. I would not plan to say that, but since you mentioned it about the Gypsy, Gypsy Rest, there is a, a nonprofit community group who has approached me with some plans to actually utilize it in a, in a, in a, in a way that is not right now utilized, to actually contribute money to making some sort of a park. And.
It's a really nice gazebo, it's just a shame.
It's a gazebo, but they may want to actually do something more than having a gazebo there.
No, but I mean, the idea is.
And, yeah, so, so if, if, if we're going to discuss this, this additional capital expense on that one, it's worthwhile to actually hearing what they can propose. So I hope to have something on that to bring next, next month. The other thing which I want to mention is this month, I may be able to actually announce that we have a, a local doctor who wants to come and practice in St. George. And I received a message from, from the, actually from the mayor of St. Stephen, who attached a, a, a letter of recommendation from, from, from the chair of the board of St. Stephen, the hospital board, and said, no, here is a person who is from St. George, becoming family doctor soon and she's looking for an opportunity. So I have sent this thing to many MLAs, but not to our MLA. So I want to actually, hope next month I will be able to actually give you some news so that it can be a good thing for our community, given the shortage of the doctors that we're facing. And that's all from me for this month.
In the interest of transparency, I'd like to report that last month I received written complaint from a town residence that Mayor Datarakis had violated the town's code of conduct. Following the two-week lockdown, we had a closed-door meeting with our town lawyer present earlier this month and unanimously agreed to ask her to investigate the complaint and provide us with a recommendation on what action, if any, should be taken. We received that last week and as per our bylaw, I followed through with a recommendation by sending a letter to the mayor. Today, we all received a copy of a letter from the mayor to our CAO questioning my authority to send that letter to him and asking council to reconsider the recommendation from the lawyer. If council decides the requested reconsideration of that, if, sorry, if council declines the requested reconsideration of that decision, Mayor Datarakis plans to seek a judicial review. I'd just like the public to know that because I'm feeling that this has all been going on and it's all hanging on my head. I just did what I'm supposed to do. Other than that, I'd like to thank the town crew for all the work they've done to clear the streets. Like Sam said, that's, we've had some bad storms and it takes a lot of time to get them cleared and so please be patient. And I'm very willing to help with the festival anytime you want me. Thank you.
As a matter of privilege, before, before I pass on the, the, the forum to, to the next councilors, I believe that breaching this information now, while the matter is, it has been, it has been discussed in our agenda under a closed-door meeting and bringing it up now at this forum may be something that may not be according to the code of conduct. And that is something that I, I, I may reserve the right to actually seek some advice from the lawyer if you have actually breached the code of conduct by doing that, so.
You already accused me of that, so I'd just like to point that out.
Counselor Datarakis, any, any statements?
Yes. So this is in line with the Summerfest. One fact is that we did dismantle the recreational committee and that was like the pool in which we regained the volunteers from. And the fact that this is our last year in St. George, like last year at St. George, I just want to put this out there as just something that maybe council can consider. And that is, maybe we could, with that money for Summerfest, we could do something meaningful for the community and contribute it to an area that really needs it. So just for the council just to consider, I was thinking that that money could be donated to the St. George Elementary School playground.
So this is statement for further consideration?
For further consideration, yes.
Okay, that's one thing that we can discuss when, when, when Counselor brings forward her plan. Counselor Armstrong?
Well, I'd just like to commend the town staff for the challenges that they've had to face for the last couple of weeks through the COVID as it ran through our community. And having one lone soldier out there by himself trying to make it all happen, I just want to commend him publicly that we do appreciate and honor those who work so hard every day to keep this community going and keeping this stuff. And yes, the complaints do come in, that it's not done maybe to everyone's satisfactory, satisfaction, but sometimes there are extenuating circumstances that prevent such things, such as extra-large storms and lack of staff.
And I don't believe that we have any other item to discuss today. So the date of our next regular meeting will be Monday, March 14th, 7 o'clock at this place. And I do need the motion to adjourn. I always will. Thank you all.